Okay, I'd like to call the organizational meeting of the Northfield Public School District to order. It's seven o'clock and we'll begin with the acceptance of notice of acceptance of office. And I need a motion for that acceptance.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and you noticed that Erin has double duty tonight. Erin is both our parvamontarian and also our clerical support for the evening, so talk slow.
That's right, talk slow.
Very good. All right. Now what I'd like to do is turn it over to Carrie Nelson, our vice chair, to administer the oath of office to our new and returning board members.
Thanks. So I'd ask the board members who were recently elected maybe to gather over by the screen so we can get a good shot of you. I swear that I will support
I swear that I will support
the Constitution of the United States and of this state
the Constitution of the United States and of this state
and that I will discharge faithfully
and I will discharge faithfully
the duties of the office of school board member
the duties of the office of school board member
of Independent School District 659
of Independent School District 659
to the best of my judgment and ability.
to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Now we are ready for the next item of individual action, which is the election of officers. And I will conduct the election for president. As soon as that office has been filled, then the president will be able to conduct the election for the remainder of the officers. So at this time, I would ask for nominations for the position of chair.
I'd nominate Ellen Iverson. I think she's provided excellent leadership for us and would hope that she'd continue serving as chair.
Is there a second?
I would like to second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations, we'll proceed to vote on the election of Ellen Iverson as chair of the Northfield School Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Ellen. And I will pass the gavel and everything else over to you for the remainder of the officer election.
All right, we are ready to move on to election of the vice chair. Is there a nomination for, or a motion for, nomination for vice chair?
I would nominate Carrie Nelson. She's been a role model, a leader, an excellent chair and vice chair. Nominate Carrie.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. Is there any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of electing Carrie as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are ready to move on to the election of clerk. Is there a nomination for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Noel Strattman. Let's second that.
Okay, a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of electing Noel as clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are ready to move on to the election of treasurer.
Nominate Ann Maple to continue serving as treasurer.
All right, we have a motion for Ann Maple as treasurer. Do I see a second?
Second.
A second? Julie? Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of electing Ann Maple as treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We are ready to move on to setting the stipends for the directors in office. I'd like to remind board members that historically, we have kept the stipends modest in comparison with other districts, as you can see in your packet. One way the stipend has been thought of in the past is allowing for a community member with a young family to pursue service to the board and not have childcare costs be a deciding factor. From what I found in looking through past minutes, it appears the last change for stipends was approved by the board on January 14th of 2008 and was an increase of $10 per month. I am looking for a motion from the board to set the stipends in the director. Is there a motion?
I vote to continue the stipends as they are.
All right, we have a motion to continue the stipends, which would be board members at $190 and $250 for chair. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor of keeping the stipends as they are, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee appointments. Traditionally, we have thought of letting the board members more consideration to look through the committees and let the board chair know of any committees that are particular interest. And what I would recommend is that the board members take a look at the committees from the past year, include the descriptions of the committees, let me know of your particular interests, and I will bring to the January 28th meeting the list of committee appointments. All right. Duties of school clerk and treasurer. And what we need to do here is actually a resolution that we will need to look at. So if you would look at the resolution in front of you. And whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .14 powers the school board to combine the duties of the office of clerk and treasurer of the board in one person and the office of business affairs of the school district. Whereas the school board has decided to combine the duties of the clerk and treasurer in one person of the office of business affairs, therefore be it resolved that the director of business services of the school district is designated by the school board of Independent School District Number 659 to perform the duties of clerk and treasurer. So I would need a motion. By Carrie, is there a second? Seconded by Ann. Is there any discussion?
No. I would just note that this just follows past practice. It's just that the statute requires us to make my resolution.
Right, absolutely. This is
Yeah, and this only really comes from the fact that MSBA, the Minnesota School Boards Association, suggested that we begin doing this, just to formalize that when you have a deputy clerk or deputy treasurer, that that specific decision has been made by the board.
Yeah, very good.
As a resolution.
All right. So because this is a resolution, we will need a roll call vote. And we have a motion and a second on the table. Scottman.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Maple.
Aye.
Fossum.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Items in the consent grouping. I would ask if there's anything to pull from the consent grouping? Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Noel to approve the consent grouping.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Is there any discussion? No. All those in favor of approving consent grouping as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would now look for a motion to adjourn our organizational meeting.
I'll move.
Moved by Noel.
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Those in favor of adjourning the organizational meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Okay, I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, January 14th, 2013. Dr. Richardson, there was an item in the table file.
Yes, in your table file, you have some items for the consent grouping in terms of personnel items, including increased, decreased, change in assignment, leave of absence, and a resignation retirement. And you also had from Director Schaback, a enlarged version of the information in terms of revenue expenditure and reserve worksheet for all of us whose eyes are beginning to not be able to
Thank you so much.
Look at very, very fine detail that she presented to us.
All right, very good. If there's no opposing, I would recommend that we add these items to the agenda as we move forward. All right, thank you very much. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for members of the district to address the board. I'd like to remind the public, this is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate on an issue.
All right, hello. My name's Emily and I live at 1345 Hazelwood Way. And we're here to represent those who are participants in 4H.
I'm sorry, Emily, could you give us first and last name? And it's just so that we have the information for the
Emily Maston.
Thank you.
So moving the calendar would affect 95 to 100 Rice County and 80 Dakota County youth who have a tie to the Northfield School District. And 100 youth were from Rice County and 45 of that were connected to Northfield. And we don't have any statistics on Dakota County at this time. And to participate in state fair judging and encampment, students would need to miss one or more days in school. And most of us, like I personally, would have to miss up to about a week of school to go to state fair. We have about 20 FFA members who would miss an additional week of school. Those who participate in arts in are at the fair for two weeks prior and one week during the fair. So they would have to miss a total of three weeks of school. And then 4H ambassadors are also at the state fair for a three-week period, so they would have to miss three weeks of school. And so we would just like the board members to consider these students when making their decisions concerning the school calendar. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Anna Shklofsky. I am eight years old and in third grade. And this is why I think 4H is important to me. 4H isn't just a silly organization to my family and me. It's special. It brings people together. And though I still have three more years until I can go to the state fair, I really hope other kids can go too. Because what if all Minnesota schools changed their calendars? State fair would hardly have any kids to show their animals or projects. Besides, when kids get a state fair trip, it means a lot to them. And that's why I think 4H is important to me. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alex Shklofsky. I am 11 years old and in sixth grade. 4H has done a lot of things for me. It has taught me many skills that I can use later on in life, such as public speaking skills and how to set goals in life. This year, my goal is to make it to the state fair. After seven years of participating in 4H, I am finally eligible to go to the state fair. If the school calendar changes, this would be impossible. I would work all year trying to achieve my goal but never being able to fulfill it. I have watched many kids older than me go to the state fair, including my older brother. The opportunities of going to the state fair are immense. It is the equivalent of a football team going to the state championship. It is the ultimate goal of every 4H-er. For these reasons, I hope the school board and the superintendent will reconsider changing the school calendar so we can all participate in fun summer activities such as the Minnesota State Fair. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eric Lundstrom. And I'll be talking about the 4H. And some of the best things about 4H is that you have your own decisions on what you want to do and the projects you can choose. There are many different decisions to make between woodworking, different arts and crafts, can show animals. And I did a project on sharks one year and I got an opportunity to go present at the Minnesota Zoo. So it was pretty cool. We got to demonstrate and talk to the judges and see, and just inform people on your project. And 4H has helped me very much through school because in microbiology, I did a microbiology project as a kindergartner and it helped me pass a pre-test in seventh grade so I could do extracurricular activity on it. And I also got many, many extra facts on many other genetics and things with animals because I'm in a rabbit project and I do Quiz Bowl. And with the livestock, you go to a four-day encampment and you get to show and do showmanship and interview, which the interview is all on your knowledge, on what you know about your animals. And I got to go to the finals round and I won the interview champion. And judging team is, you are the judge of the rabbits. Instead of having a judge, you are, you're trying to get as close to what the judge thinks about the rabbit as you're, like, as what? You would think the rabbit would be closest to the standard. And 4H has given me many leadership skills and I'm currently a vice president of our 4H club. So it's teaching us how to run meetings and all sorts of good, great leadership skills. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Lundstrom. I live at 30457 Canada Avenue and I'm also talking about 4H. 4H is a big part of my life. I've been in it for about 11 years now. 4H teaches you responsibility, whereas instead of putting all your things off till the end of the year, you usually get them done before the fair happens. And this is carried over into my schoolwork. When I get home, I immediately start working on my homework so I don't have to procrastinate. And I always study for tests very hard. The 4H motto is to make the best better. And with 4H, it really accentuates this point. You only want to do your work if you're going to put 100% into it. You want to get, you want to get to as close of perfection as you can. And this carries out to school as well for me. I don't like missing school, so this would be a very hard thing for me to do, missing a week of school for a state fair. And it allows me to carry out my skills in real life. I have worked on photography through 4H and I have gotten jobs taking senior portraits for other people. The livestock project is a big part of my 4H experience. I am in the sheep project. And throughout the entire year, you work with your animal to get it as best ready for the fair as you can. So this starts in like mid-January all the way through August. And missing the fair for me would mean putting in all that effort to not have a good result at the end. And the state fair is probably the most fun thing I do the entire summer, so I would really not want to miss out on that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Sorley. I am a junior here at the Northfield High School. I live at 2865 300 St. West, Northfield, Minnesota. I am opposed to starting the 2013-2014 school year early because I am an active 4H member. 4H has taught me leadership, responsibility, public speaking skills, and community involvement. Throughout the year, I work hard at improving these skills. I demonstrate these skills at the state and county fair in August. With an early start to the school year, I would be forced to choose between my academic learning and my involvement in 4H. I feel that both of these programs are very important to me reaching the, my life goals. And I have learned a lot from both of them. That is why I do not want to be forced to choose between going to the state fair and learning a lot or going or staying in school and also learning a lot. That is why I am opposed to starting school early. Thank you.
My name is Zachary Shklofsky. It's the third time you've heard my last name. I have three younger siblings and they're all coming up in 4H. And I was the older brother that my sister mentioned earlier. I think, I think a big part of what, what's happening right now is these, these kids who are younger than me, I'm a senior. I go to Randolph High School and I'm not directly affected by this prob, date change, I guess. They've seen me and what I've been able to do and achieve and learn within the 4H and FFA program and they want the exact same opportunity. I would say probably 50% of your 4H program is within the state fair. When you look at 4H, it's not one thing, learning from one way or another. There's the biggest encompassment of just what everything you can possibly think of. We go from all the way from public speaking to teaching. We have a program called Youth Teaching Youth. And Northfield, I believe, does have that program, along with just whatever other public school in the area directly related to 4H. We also have things into robotics and technology and livestock. To my knowledge, except FFA, no other program incorporates all of these different things into one environment. In fourth grade, I got to go to the state fair early. You're generally not allowed to go and exhibit until you're in sixth grade. Local leaders noticed that I have a pretty good leadership, skills and opportunities and they took that and brought me to the state fair to do a green screen team where I promoted 4H. That was my first time being at the state fair and I have been there every year since. I personally am affected in two different ways because I am involved in 4H and FFA. I will take one year for, or one week for 4H and then the next week for FFA. Both these programs are extremely important to me and help to make me the person I am. I would strongly hope you guys consider what my younger siblings, there's one that's at a 4H Federation Board meeting right now, he's not here. My three younger siblings and these other good 4H leaders and members, what's on the line for them with your decision? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kayla Huntington and I am extremely active in the 4H program. All throughout the summer, I show my two horses and I got the opportunity last summer to go to two national trips. One of which I earned national champion in both horse judging, which you judge a selection of horses and you get reasons on it, which helps me a lot with my public speaking and speeches in school. And also I won national champion for hippology, which is general horse knowledge, which incorporates tons of studying throughout the entire summer. And without these, I would not be able to, with these programs, I would not have been able to achieve these achievements if the school dates were to be changed. And also I show my horses for an entire week at the Dakota County Fair. So if the dates were to be changed, my state schedule would be extremely difficult. And so this would just greatly affect me and all my Dakota County showers, fellow showers, so thank you.
Thanks, Kayla.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Cornkevin. And as a ninth grade student here at Northfield High School, I feel it is important to voice my opinion on this issue. I'm currently experiencing the turmoil that is finals for the first time. And I feel that the calendar change, moving the end of the semester to December, would make things even more difficult. A few weeks after break, I feel refreshed and ready to tackle the onslaught of work. If the calendar were moved, students would have to deal with finals just days before Christmas, not to mention so many kids would be gone on vacation. We would also be more high-strung without the break prior to the end of the semester. Secondly, I think sports starting the same day at school would not be efficient at all. I participate in cross-country during the fall and things work well when they are staggered. Sports begin, which allow us to get into routine, then school a couple of weeks later. Sports and school starting at the same time would be too much all at once. I'm also a little confused about the reasoning behind this new calendar. Why do we want to artificially inflate our test scores by moving the date school starts? All in all, I don't think the issues presented by this calendar are worth the rise in test scores. We are already well above average. Why change anything? As a high school student myself, I hope you will take all my concerns, and there are so many more that I just listed, into consideration and vote against this new calendar. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mackenzie Vermeer and I am a freshman at Northfield High School. I am here to address my decision on whether or not next year's school, or next school year should start in the middle of August. I am here on the behalf of the Northfield High School student body. I, a student at Northfield, is against going, starting school early. Us, the students, student body, have other priorities like state fair competitions and most of us already have Pacific summer vacations. We take with our families each year around this time. Also, some of us have summer jobs that are seasonal and we rely on the money we earned on that, that period of time. That year, or this year, I am a new student at Northfield. I find it unreasonable for students here to go to school a couple of weeks early. Our student bodies full of hard-working individuals, making our school one of the, one of the top schools in Minnesota. Before I went to Northfield, I attended Farmington Schools. At Farmington, there is classes that I wouldn't even take until my sophomore year that what I accomplished my freshman year at Northfield. The classes provided, provide that high school expectations for their students to thrive, them to make, to do their best and be successful in their futures. There is no need to take away our summers because the summer can open our mind to new possibilities and ideas. Another concern that I have is for sports programs provided. I am an active participant in the sport program, track and field. If we get, or if we get in May, I'll already be participating in track and field and will be participating up until sections, which is the second weekend in June. And I hope you would take this into consideration to change the date.
Good evening, Dr. Richardson, board members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I'm a driver for, well, three of these kids plus one. So I appreciate the opportunity. I apologize to the other students for going before you. We have students and families in Northfield Educational, Agricultural, and Business Community that are heavily involved in 4H and Future Farmers of America, or FFA as it is known, both in Dakota and Rice Counties among other programs. The development enrichment that occurs through these locally and nationally-based programs cannot be obtained through the public and private-based education system. It is my understanding that the changes proposed to the school calendar by the Northfield School Superintendent, Dr. Richardson, and members of the Northfield School Board does not provide for any additional days of instruction and may add significantly to the childcare costs for those that can least afford it. As a district thoroughly thought out the coordination of the community-based services that actively engage students in summertime programs, which typically do not start until June, when school is traditionally let out. Dr. Richardson is to be commended for receiving the 2012 Minnesota Superintendent of the Year Award, named by the Minnesota Association of School Administrators. Dr. Richardson was quoted in Northfield Patch in reference to receiving this award with the following statement. "During my 30 years as a superintendent, I have always been guided by one simple yet powerful question: Is this in the best interest of all the students in my district? The valuable and lifelong friendships that are developed and livestock and non-livestock opportunities that children are immersed in through, through 4H and FFA are not to be taken lightly. We will be relying on some of these students, our students, to feed another billion people that are added to our world community by approximately the year 2030. Is this proposed change to the school calendar in the best interest of all the students in our district? Let's not take away the summertime opportunities for all sorts of Northfield families or for our next Norman Borlaug." Thank you very much.
Sir, could you give us your name? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my name is Vladimir Shklofsky. And I'm at 2391 300 St. West. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Carol Nassith. I'm not with that group, but I'm also speaking from a 4H perspective. I'm a mom of four 4H-ers in the Northfield School District who currently, right now, with about 40 other 4H-ers in the Northfield School District are holding their meeting at this time, so they're not here with me along with their parents. 4H, you've heard a lot from the kids. I just would like to tell you what I have some handouts for if you'd like, that there are studies out there of how 4H can affect children versus kids who are not in 4H and the benefits that it provides. And you may say, well, that's an option for you to take your child out of 4H, or take your child out of school for that week that those kids spoke about, or for FFA, and make them choose between that. But I will rival that, that there's not a lot of participation memberships out there for kids at ages all the way from five years of age through 18 that run year-round, where have one week of the year that they are so focused on. And most of these kids, as you heard from many of them, are very good students who would be very upset if they had to choose between a week off of school to go to their 4H and then come back and make up a week, a week worth of work. That's a lot to ask a kid who's already performing at a high level. I just want to read to you briefly from some of this research and what the studies have shown, which a lot of these kids spoke to and you heard from. Youth who have participated in 4H for more than a year are significantly better off than youth who did not participate in the program. Participation in 4H has a positive influence on children's perception of their own competence, coping, and life skills. 4H-ers rate themselves higher than non-4H peers on working with groups, understanding self, communicating, making decisions, and leadership. That was a study of more than 300 4H club members and more than 500 non-4H school children in Texas. For 4H-ers, more involvement is associated with higher scores on communication, working with groups, and leaderships. These kids are our future and our future depends on leadership. Four of my three, or three of my four children are eligible to be officers for their local community 4H club. Three of them are officers. All three of them have a president, a vice president, a secretary in 4H. One of them is an ambassador for H. She wants to be a state ambassador. To be a state ambassador, she would have to miss three weeks of school. She's a junior in high She's a junior in high school this week, or this year. That would mean her senior year, she would have to start out with three weeks missing. I vehemently oppose this. I was here a year and a half, two years ago when this came up, myself and Jen Skelski and very few other people even knew this was on board. And it got put aside. I am quite upset also that the communication to all families from the superintendent came out dated January 11th, last Friday, giving people very, very little time to come and speak to you tonight. So I'm speaking on behalf of the big giants 4H Club and many of its members who absolutely oppose changing before Labor Day. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adrian Falcon and I am here tonight representing Carlton College Center for Community and Civic Engagement, which is the organization at Carlton that works on outreach and engagement in the community. And so I know several things that I want to start by saying. I want to acknowledge and appreciate the work that the school district is doing to close the achievement gap in the ways that this is an attempt to try to deal with that issue and be very clear from the outset that we at Carlton really want to work with the Northfield School District to align our efforts with what you are seeking to do and to support Northfield students in any way that we can to achieve those goals. So we are very excited to work together with you on that endeavor. We also, as we considered this proposal this morning, the staff met from the center and we talked about what we wanted to bring forward as information to you as you make your decision. We appreciate the lining up with the spring break calendars. That helps our students who are currently working in the community. Unfortunately, the fall calendar does not line up as well. The school currently, under the new proposal, is proposed to start August 13 and the first day of Carlton classes this fall will be September 16. By the time that you need, you have a few weeks to get programs up and running, we're talking about the end of September that we would truly be able to get students going in the school district in terms of support. And then when you think Carlton, one can criticize its current calendar as well, but by the time that you think that they are done by Thanksgiving, that leaves about five weeks of programming in the fall that we would be able to support Northfield School District students in their endeavors. And so when I say support, what kinds of things are we currently doing that we would like to continue to do and even expand to the degree possible? Last year, we don't necessarily broke it out mostly by individual programs. Last year, Carlton students contributed over 23,000 hours of volunteer work in the Northfield community. So that's not only in the school district. However, our main partner in the community is the school district and it is where we send more of our students both during the school day and after the school day to contribute and to be involved. Specifically, one of the major programs that we run is the Northfield Reads and Counts Program, which is a federally funded work-study program, which enables students to be paid their work-study job and to work in the school districts and support students. So last year, there were 44 students from Carlton who participated in the Reads and Counts Program. Each student worked about eight hours a week based on an average of 32 hours, which means that each student contributed about 256 hours, leading to a total of 11,008 hours that were contributed by Carlton to the Northfield School District through the Reads and Counts Program. Through that and through other programs, we are, this is dreadful, Mike. Through that and through other programs, we are tutoring students Monday through Friday at the three elementary schools and the middle school between 8 and 3. In addition to that, both through that and even more through other programs that we have developed, we are tutoring students through the PLUS Programs, again at the three elementary schools and at the, with the Torch Program and the Middle School Youth Center. So we currently try to support in any way and we meet regularly with different individuals and members of the school district to figure out ways to support the needs that are identified. This year, for example, we have started a new Geo Sciences after-school program one day a week to try to strengthen what's happening. So we remain open and want to work with you and figure out the best ways to make that happen.
Try not to fight with the mic. Good evening. My name is Don Hasseltine. I live at 815 Second Street East. I come tonight as a concerned citizen with two children in the school system and a son of an educator and teacher. My sense is that a majority of teachers do not feel comfortable coming forward with their own concerns and issues around the proposed change, nor do they feel that they were particularly consulted on the proposal at hand. So I'd like to lend a voice, an authentic voice, to comments that I've heard and ones that have been shared with me, with all of you. And these are words from one of our teachers. "I'm very skeptical that time added to the beginning of the year will raise test scores significantly for tests taken in the spring. In my experience, there's a lot of review time needed directly before the test. Units and concepts taught in September require a tense review and/or reteaching in the weeks right before the test so concepts are fresh. This often means getting away from a balanced curriculum and lots of teaching to the test in a month or two right before MCA tests. We have already lost so much in this singular focus on reading and math high-stakes testing. I am dismayed that Northfield is thinking of making such a hasty and desperate move and what seems to be a capitulation to the no child left behind educational climate. Please give this another year and take proper and respectful measures to communicate with families and back up your plans with a broad base of solid research. This process has not been best for families or the community and is very hard to believe that extra school time in August will bring about significant gains in springtime test scores. I believe most teachers will agree." I would just add one or two additional comments. One of the things that, as new members of the community, we are all of a year here in Northfield and the two big issues in the education of our children have centered around information technology and the change in the calendar. And from my understanding of what the research indicates is that attracting and keeping the very best teachers, giving them the right-sized classrooms and allowing them to teach is what really brings about change and positive outcomes for our children. So I hope that as we proceed here and think about this calendar issue, I hope that the board will consider taking this up at another time and not moving forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Becky Har and my address is 20567 Hartford Way and I live in Lakeville. And I wanted to kind of tag along with what our Carlton representative said. And that is, I'm a teacher at Sibley Elementary and I've been in the district for 20 years, so I've seen a lot of things come and go. I oppose the proposed flexible calendar that's been put forward to you as the board. I wish there are two of those reasons I believe that's not best for students. First of all, as a classroom teacher, I use college tutors to help students who struggle academically along with students who need acceleration, the two groups that this calendar proposal is targeting. With 28 students in my class and with the need to differentiate in all content areas, I've come to rely on the college tutors to assist one-on-one or with small groups. If we are starting school four weeks before St. Olaf and five weeks before Carlton, we are looking at not having additional support in our classrooms for more than a month. And after what she said, that's even longer than what I had anticipated. Currently, we have 106 college students from the two colleges that participate in the paid work-study program. They work an average of six to eight hours a week. We are looking at five to six weeks or even longer before college students are able to assist Northfield students. If you do the math, 106 students times just six hours a week is 636 hours a week we're losing. At eight hours a week, we're losing 848 additional hours. Multiply that by about five to six weeks, five weeks for St. Olaf, six weeks for Carlton and longer now that I've heard from the Carlton representative, that equates between 3,500 and 4,600 hours of lost support in our classrooms, a time when we're looking to help those kids who may not pass the MCAs or who are most likely to take those AP exams. These are conservative numbers since this does not include college students who volunteer on their own or through classroom requirements. Currently, 75% of our students or our volunteers through Northfield Accelerate are college volunteers. My second reason for not supporting this proposal is that we need to remember that students are just not a number. They learn through experiences outside of the classroom, work experience you've heard from 4H and even family vacations and time together, time that's not so structured. I believe that teachers working daily with the students of Northfield have the greatest impact on learning, not shifting days on a calendar. I thank you for listening and considering these points and making your decision that will impact our community until June of 2016. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Bliss. I live at 815 Second Street East in Northfield. Last year, a one-year calendar was passed in anticipation of proposing a balanced calendar for school year 2013-2014, which means that the superintendent and school board have had at least a year to carefully review this issue, to create an anonymous feedback system for the many teachers who are uncomfortable speaking publicly, to get input from parents, community members and students, to present research that lays out compelling reasons with data why this calendar is or is not a good idea, to engage single and/or working parents who may not be able to make it to these evening meetings, or those who don't have ready access to technology or who don't speak English, to consult the very small minority of schools who have chosen to make this move and the vast majority who have decided against it, to establish an engaged, inclusive process involving all stakeholders. But none of that was done. Instead, it showed up on a school board agenda in mid-December, though no dates were provided at the time, and just three days ago, the proposed calendar was shared, with all discussions to be held within a very compressed, less than two-week time. This process is not fair to or respectful of the residents of Northfield. The issue deserves unhurried thoughtful evaluation. At the very least, we deserve more lead time. Many families have made unchangeable travel and vacation commitments for the second half of August, not knowing that this was on the horizon. If a major calendar shift is implemented, the community should have at least a year's warning to adjust and plan and be consulted during the process, not just at the very tail end of the conversation. The impression one gets is that this is being rushed through so to minimize public pushback. The superintendent has made it very clear that year-round school is his first preference and if not that, then this. I would ask, however, that the school board do due diligence as elected officials representing the town of Northfield and invest the time and energy that this issue deserves. And at the end of that process, present the community with compelling data as to why this is or is not in the best educational interest of our children. As noted in a Northfield News article on August 1, 2012, math test scores last year went up 12 to 15%, and the superintendent was quoted as saying, "It's good to see those numbers come up. We're making some good progress." So, test scores have gone up without the calendar change and likely will again regardless. Some schools with a balanced calendar have seen test scores go down. Apple Valley has cut three instructional days, yet their test scores rose. Lakeville spent a year discussing whether to cut instructional, two instructional days and just did. We have no evidence that more time in seats equals higher test scores. Years of research show time and time again that the strongest indicator of student success is high-quality teachers. We have those in abundance. Let's let them do their jobs and let's acknowledge that we live in a great community with strong schools and there are issues far more pressing than manipulating dates towards an unproven goal, unproven goal of modest testing gains. Let's focus on those.
My name's Nicole Linder. I started the petitiononchange.org. Everyone's probably heard more than they want to hear from me. So I'm just going to go ahead and give you a copy, each of the board, a copy of the petition and a copy of all the comments. We have 289 signatures from Northfield residents as of now. I just want to add that this whole proposal does not seem to be in the spirit of the town. We got our wonderful town saying, "Colleges, cows and contentment." And it's not, we're not working with our wonderful resource, the colleges. Couple of people of ours spoke about that. And cows are traditional farming and 4H community. You heard a lot from them as well. And I can tell you, the town is not very contented right now. So please, listen to the community and I'll just give you this information. And did I say I live at 1600 Cannon Valley Drive?
No. It's not my real home. You can just take each and pass it down. Signature comments.
My name is Dawn Patterson and I am a parent of two children in the district and I wish to comment on the calendar. I moved here to Northfield 14 years ago and my husband and I did not have children yet, but we moved here for the schools. We had a choice of some surrounding communities and we chose Northfield for that reason. It seems clear to me, based on the previous comments as well as everything that I have seen on the social network and the petition sites and the comments that I've heard as I've spoken to many, many community members, I've communicated many of those comments to you, but it is clear to me that we will need more than these two weeks before the vote to share the data that I assume the superintendent has for us to show us that this is somehow going to benefit the vast majority of students of Northfield. And if there is that data, we need time to consider those options and how best to structure our calendar. A representative from the Board of Education indicates that if the application that we are talking about right now to bypass the mandated state calendar is submitted properly, it will be approved. Therefore, she's right, it's a bad mic. And the district will be expected, will be expected to adhere to the applied for calendar. So the vote in two weeks is for all intents and purposes binding and that is the critical vote that's coming. So we have two weeks. Who is this designed to benefit and how will it benefit them? What data and research supports this proposal? I'm very concerned that no empirical support has been provided to the community because neither I nor several others who have looked into this have been able to find substantial supporting data. Other districts who've tried a balanced calendar approach have seen disappointing results. It's the responsibility of the superintendent to provide strong academic data to support his recommendations to the board and we have not yet seen that and we have only two weeks. Northfield has historically had excellent test scores. We've had room to grow and we have. Dr. Richardson was just in the Northfield News this fall praising another rise in test scores. We have outstanding teachers, some of the best in the state, high-performing students in many co-curricular activities, including 4H and sports and so many other things. We have, what is to be gained from this calendar change, aside from administrative simplification? Standardized tests are to broadly gauge student progress. That's the purpose. Moving the days around to get more instruction before standardized tests is simply a shell game to improve standardized test scores without increasing learning or retention. That is my biggest concern. If we move our start date to gain advantage and then other districts do the same, are we then forced to move start dates further back in order to maintain our advantage? Yet, we don't change what students are learning in a year, so what is the benefit of this? We simply improve our test scores relative to other districts? That's not what education is. That may be what education has become, but is that what we want education to be in Northfield? This is, this is a town that values education clearly. This is not what we want here. In the South Metro, our children have access to innumerable summer camps and activities for K-12 students, many of which have all-day options for working families so children aren't relegated to daycare, and everything from the arts, sciences, history and humanities, athletics, nature and outdoor activities and more. These are offered by museums, zoos, universities and other organizations. These are not Northfield-based activities, yet many, many, many Northfield students participate in these activities. I can't tell you how many times, I mean, every camp we go to, up at the zoo, the science museum, anywhere, we see someone from Northfield every time. But three full weeks of opportunity will be lost to this calendar as these programs most typically begin in the third week of June. And they're not Northfield-based programs, so they're not going to change their calendars for us. Why do we believe that giving final exams to high school students during the holiday rush will be a positive for test scores? I was glad to see one of the students bring that up because I've heard that again and again. And the idea has been under discussion for two years and it failed to pass once. Why has community input not been sought until now, tonight? Why have we not been talking about this for the last year if this was something that was intended to be brought up again? There are many personal reasons why different calendars might suit different families. That's completely expected. But to force a substantial change from the calendar guidelines mandated by state law with so little time to prepare and with no empirical data to support such a move is unacceptable. You're asking families to give up an awful lot in order to take a risk on something that other districts had found to be an unpromising experiment. Our children don't need to be experimented on. Our children don't need to be experimented on. We need real data, real numbers. We need to know that this is going to help them somehow, and all of them, not just some, The board has a duty to Northfield to reject this proposal and maintain the mandated traditional calendar, at least until a better option is offered, and community has had a legitimate chance to weigh in. This is far too large a disruption to the families of Northfield to just give it a try. Thank you.
Mine up a little bit, because you've heard a lot already. So, board members, Superintendent Richardson, my name is Heather Malika. I am here to express my extreme displeasure of the modified calendar proposal. So, after learning of the proposal a couple weeks ago, I watched the superintendent's video on the Northfield Patch website. In it, he mentioned you were beginning to have discussions on possible modifications to the calendar, in an area you were really considering as a balanced calendar, and that was one month ago. To make such a drastic change so illogical will negatively affect many families, and all for the hope that maybe it'll have a positive change? First, how did you identify a problem existed? What other solutions did you evaluate? From last Friday's email, reasons like attempts to align instruction and reduce interruptions are vague at best. Where is the research, the evidence, the evaluations, the time, and the thought that went into this proposal? And why wasn't this communicated to the parents long ago? This is bad choice written all over it. I've signed the petition against this proposal. I join countless others to speak out against this pointless disruption to families. You're asking families to adapt their schedules, their routines, habits, lifestyles, commitments, and obligations, with seemingly a poorly thought-out solution to a problem that might not even exist. And we're not talking a couple days here, we're talking weeks, three weeks earlier. In fall of 2015, it'll be four weeks earlier. Also, I find it disturbing that such a drastic change was brought to the attention of parents less than a month before a decision was made. Please, you are not being fair to families and giving them a chance to fully grasp the situation. Please stop moving so fast. Please, I hope and pray you will leave well enough alone, or, as an alternative, I might recommend you treat this proposal only as an idea, you know, part of a bigger picture, which needs to be evaluated properly over the next nine to 12 months. Or, on an ongoing basis, you know, how are things working, and are there problems we can identify and work to resolve? Do the research and evaluations, talk with teachers, talk with students, talk with parents, evaluate other solutions. Please don't propose, please don't propose solutions this big in a bubble. Too many lives are affected. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Banath. I live at 10534 First Timber Lane, here in Northfield. My family and I moved here three years ago because of the schools. My wife is a doctor that works in Farmington, Northfield, and Faribault, and Northfield was our choice because of the job that you guys have done. So, before I start, I'd like to thank you for the job you've done in the past, because Northfield schools are as good as they are, because you've put in the time and you've put in the effort to make them as good as they are, and we have a lot of good teachers, and you're well-supported by the community. I'm also gratified to see everyone I voted for in November here now on the board. It's nice to live in a community where people I vote for get elected. Very gratified to see that. As part of the election process, I did quite a bit of research into each one of your backgrounds that were running for office, and I don't believe any of you ran on the premise of changing the calendar to a balanced calendar. If I'm wrong, please, tell me. But that was not something that came up during the election, and I think having this come up at the first board meeting of the new board is, it just seems very rushed to me. I'm dismayed by the short notice that we received. We received this on Friday afternoon at 3:50, telling us that this was, that the meeting was going to be here tonight, which didn't leave me and my wife a lot of time to get our two kids daycare, so we could come here tonight to have our input. This looks like, this has been a horrible rush to get this done with very minimal public input. I'm gratified to get the chance tonight to speak to you. I do not think having two more meetings where all you receive are copied notes from subgroups is a good way to do this. This is too big of an impact on families that live in Northfield. My wife and I, due to her schedule and mine, have to schedule her travel a year in advance. Our schedule, our August is already taken up for next year. So, my kids must have at least two weeks of classes, and I don't think that's a good way to start out a school year, and I don't think it's a good message to send to your children, that school is not important because you have to travel. But that's what we're going to have to do if you push this through. This is, you're talking about a change that we heard about three days ago for something that's going to begin eight months from now, and that's just simply too fast. And perhaps there are good reasons to do these sort of things. I, again, do not like teaching to the test, and I do not think that changing a calendar simply to hope that we might get better test scores is a good idea. And I think No Child Left Behind is about to be left behind, and I don't think we need to do any more to make up, to try and make up test scores to make ourselves look better. Northfield is already a great school district, and this is not the way to make it better.
I live here in Northfield. I'm not a public speaker. If I had conda 4H, I might be better. I am here to represent my nine-year-old, and I don't want to be here. I don't want to have to be here. She didn't want me to be here. And the message I have from her is, don't you know that kids hate school, and they love summer?
I'm Greg Lenin. I'm at 503 Water Wheel Circle in Dundas. I have two children in the Northfield School Districts, ages 10 and 7. I'm going to come from, this summer's being taken up from this. Last summer, my family went on a road trip to St. Louis. We went at the end of Aug, or in the middle of August, which is when school would have started. We wouldn't have been able to do this road trip. We went to, we visited the Arch of St. Louis, we went down to Memphis, visited Graceland, we were up into Nashville, visiting the Parthenon, because they love the Percy Jackson movies. So, they were, and they learned from it. And this is the stuff that, while you're learning in school, this is the stuff where you're actually getting out and experiencing it, and learning it through actual experience. And this is what changing the school calendar will take away from, from a lot of families. There are, my son's in baseball. He does it through the spring into the summer, and that moves all the way through August, up into the beginning of August. We're the family that, if we join a sport, we want to be at every practice, at every game, we want to, you know, participate and be there. We don't want to take a week out during that time to go on a vacation. That's what August is for, for lots of families, so that they can have their summers of doing their activities. And changing your school calendar will take away from a lot of that. Sports themselves, Raider football. I grew up in Northfield. I was on the football team. I remember starting football in mid-August, two practices a day. It got us ready for the season. That's going to go away. They won't have the time, there's no, you can't take, you know, they can't jump out of school to take it up morning practice. So, you're hitting our sports seasons, and it's not just football, you're swimming and...
13256 Lamb Avenue in Dennison. I have four school-aged children. Like some of the other people have said, we moved here a lot because of the schools. We looked from Belle Plaine over to Hazenings, and we were looking for a place to live in the country. We picked here for the schools. I kind of look at this as like, well, I do a work for system changes. I ask myself two questions. What is this buying us, and what are we losing and negatively impacting? From what I hear, I don't see it buying us a lot. What are negative impacting? Seems like we possibly could be increasing costs. Schools are always complaining they don't have enough money. Why are we adding some to the costs? The tutors from college have mentioned, that's a huge loss. Family vacations that have been planned, all the family traditions, the 4H things, there's so many things you're taking away. And then, the other part I had on here is the one that students mentioned, is putting the tests right before Christmas break, all the little parties they have, the concerts, and all the things that went on, it's going to make things worse for them. I could go on, and people who know me know I do, but seeing as how it's been late, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board?
I'm Shannon Tassiva. I live in Northfield. I'm a sibling mom. I've got a first grader and a third grader. And everything that I was thinking I would say has already been said tonight. Say it again. I just want to say that things like personal reasons, vacations, and camps, and whatnot, that might seem personal, petty, and kind of trivial, and change is hard for people. And I think an initial knee-jerk reaction to any big change is panic and anxiety. But if there was any clear evidence that this benefited children in learning, it would be a different story. I don't love this idea, I hate this idea, for personal reasons, related to summer and being with my girls, and weather, and all sorts of things that matter in Minnesota. But it would be different if someone could say, "Look right here, there's all this research that shows, starting at this time of year, benefits children, and benefits their academic achievement." I haven't seen it, so convince me, I guess.
Hi, I'm Roger Yannick, and I live at 28350 Isle Avenue. I'm going to be speaking on this about, probably from a perspective that I don't have in the future. My children have all gone through Northfield schools. So, I'm here tonight to support these parents and students that have come forward, and I can't really say a whole lot more, but I can give you some experiences, and I can tell you what it is. Thirteen years ago, I came to Northfield, and I don't want to belabor the 4H, because there was a lot of representation there tonight on that, but I'm telling you, that is a very good program. Three students, all good students, honorable students, my kids, were all in 4H, and one of them is seeking career in animal science at University of Minnesota due to that program. I'm very proud of them. I'm very proud of the Northfield schools. When I travel in business, I speak about the schools and how important it is here, and I just trust that we wouldn't rush into a decision that I just learned about Friday night when I came back from business trip. I think it's very, very, very rushed, and I think you've heard a lot about that tonight. I have to, I have to say, from, not only from the 4H, but, and like I said, it doesn't really impact me, because my students, my kids are done, but I'm here to support the rest of these parents and the students at Northfield. These kids, my kids have had summer jobs, they work 4H, and going back, that, two weeks early, three weeks early, that really impacts family vacations. We used to spend August as a vacation time. That would be a preliminator. Now, in my case, I can't say it's going to be, because it doesn't affect me, but I'm here to support everybody else. And I just want to say that I oppose this. I think you need to take more time. Is there, what is the agenda behind this? You know, Dr. Richards, you mentioned about year-round schools. Is this the first step into getting to that point? If there's a hidden agenda, we need to, we need to know what you're thinking about. And so, I think time to let the public know, give us the data, and let us make the decision. But please, we ask you to reconsider this, and give us, give it a little more time, and not rush to decision. So, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Andy Turner, and I'm, I have two children here in the school district. What I have to say about that change in the calendar is, I agree with most of them here. The early start is not a good idea against the laws here in Minnesota, first of all. And there are exceptions. You can put in an application to start earlier, but I'm concerned about something else besides 4H. But I noticed over the year is, that was always a great point for me, is the short breaks we're having. Any Thanksgiving, in the spring, we have President's Day, all very short breaks, which we would like to use for traveling. And what we would like to see is a longer break over these days. That would benefit a little bit us, rather than having a big span in the summer, 12 weeks, the children not going to school. What is happening is, they forget what they learned. And what I would like to address, that we have a little bit more spread-out vacations over the year. That would make more sense for me, and then maybe go into June, maybe go even into middle of June, or end of June, and then start again in August. I think that would be a better solution, or at least consider something like this to attend to parents, which are seeing a little bit the different way of doing these things opposed to vacation. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board?
To approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, December 10.
I approve the minutes.
Moved by Carrie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, the superintendent, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. All right, on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Richardson.
Okay, and I have only one this evening, and that is, we'd like to congratulate the 27 students that participated in the first annual 2012 Winter Break Chess Tournament, hosted by South Central Service Co-op, and Mankato Community Education Recreation. Students in grades K-12 from Northfield, Melrose, Mankato, St. Peters, Shakopee, and Webster, competed in primary, elementary, upper division, based on grade levels. In the morning, lessons were offered. Afternoon, we spent tournament rounds. I'd like to congratulate the following Northfield students. Peter Hillman, who tied for first place. Colin Thomas Green, who came in second place. Saxton Eggy, who received an honorable mention at the third grade level in the primary division. Also, Peter also tied for second place, and Colin placed third in the elementary division. And Jackson Hillman took first place at the eighth grade level. Jasper Eggy also took first place at the ninth grade level, and first place in the upper division. And Jackson placed second in the upper division. Congratulations to our chess players.
Other announcements, board members, or recognition?
Carrie? I just have one. I just want to thank the people who have come to the public meetings recently. We've had some over the past quite a long period of time about technology, and then on the Bluff in recent months. And I just want to say, you know, as board members, or I guess I could just speak for myself, I really appreciate it anytime anybody takes the time to share their opinion with me, as, you know, so many of you gave up an evening to come here and share your opinion tonight. But, you know, whether it's email, or a conversation in the grocery store, or coming like this, but coming to those public meetings, and having that opportunity in those small groups for really nuanced conversation about complex issues, is really, really helpful to me as a board member. And I know that it is, it's a different kind of time commitment, it's a different kind of level of engagement, but I really appreciate the people who have taken the time to do that. So, I just want to thank the folks who did that. And I also want to thank Stephanie for all her service to the district, and wish her well in her new job. This is the last meeting, formal meeting, that we'll see her at. So, thank you very much, Stephanie.
Board members, other announcements, recognition? I have just a reminder that you should have received in the mail, board members, the Service Learning is going to have their Share-Demonstrate celebration on Wednesday, that's this Wednesday, from 6:00 to 7:00. I know other, in the past years, board members have attended, and it's just a terrific opportunity to see that, the Service Learning projects that the students have created. So, I would encourage you to attend, and that is at the Northfield High School Lower Cafeteria. All right. If there are no other announcements or recognition, we will move on to the first item for discussion, which I believe is the school calendar.
It is the school calendar.
Do we have Mr. Kudre's students still here, or do they have to go study for finals?
They're here. Okay. Where my statistics class has gone to Mr., or Dr. Richardson and the board, and asked for projects that might be things that we could use our techniques and delve into the issues of the day. We didn't expect this one to be quite this big of an issue, but we're happy that people are involved. As Carrie pointed out, that's good. So, I'm going to turn it over to my students, and they're going to tell you what we know. We've got Ivy Johnson, Adam Simzer, Cassie Thomas, Helen Forsythe, Mari Haugen, Eitzman Teo Whiskus, Megan Christopherson, Jared Lenke, and Peter Schleck, who are juniors and seniors in my statistics and probability class.
And they're going to tell you what they know.
Hi there, my name is Jared Lenke, and we are here to explain the data we found for the academic calendar. Okay, so how we collected data was, we took phone numbers from the Northfield Schools' directory, and we would take these phone numbers and we, every group had a list of phone numbers, and we would choose randomly. We ended up making 250 calls where people answered and participated in the survey. And we would call three times during, throughout the day if they did not answer the first time, so that we wouldn't create bias in that some parents are not home the whole time, or the whole day, so we would reach them at other times. Okay, what you can see here is how we randomized. These are just a list of random numbers. And what we would do is we would take a calculator that we have and we would get, or a random number list, and we would take and get a random number out of it, and then we would take that random number and go from the top of the list starting and count down. So the random integer for the first one is 11, so if you go from the top and count down to the first highlighted number, it would be 11 numbers, and then we would repeat that process. And then the next one would be eight, countdown, and then seven, countdown, and then from this, we would not create bias by choosing the numbers, and we could ensure that it would be a more random survey.
Hi, my name is Adam Simzer, and I am a senior here at Northfield High School. One of the most important things when taking a survey is how to remove bias from that survey, and the best way to do that is by having a random sample. And as Jared told us, we used a random sample. Another thing that we did to remove bias is Mr. Kudry wrote a script that each one of the students participating in asking questions read it word for word exactly, so it would all be the same for each people listening to it. We also switched the order of the answers so that each time it would be random for the person that was being called. We made sure to give information for both sides of the questions asked so that we would not have bias there. As Jared said, also, we used a random number generator to ensure that we weren't just picking numbers, that they were all random. We also made sure to call at different times of the day to ensure we weren't just talking to parents who stayed at home. We made sure to make sure the people who were working, we would get a chance to call them too. The last thing we did was, we made sure that there was two distinct answers, so that we could make sure that we know exactly what the highest priority for the person that was being asked the questions was. The first question that we asked them was, "What Northfield Schools do your children currently attend?" And then the options are shown up there. The next question we asked was, "How many school-aged children from your family attend the Northfield Public Schools?"
All right, so I'm Tia Whiskus, I'm a senior at Northfield High School. To start off our script, we informed everyone that we were calling that this survey is not to change how many days that we have in a calendar year for school, but to determine where we want to place them. In order to record our results, we use a confidence interval, which is basically saying that we are 95% confident that the population will fall between two intervals. It's like saying out of 100 times, 95 times out of 100, it'll land between two percentages.
All right, and my name is Megan Christopherson, I'm also a senior here at Northfield High School. And the first three questions that we asked during the calls had to do with positioning of the start date of the school year. This was the first question that we asked. I'm hoping that everyone can read since you guys are all on the school board, so go ahead and take them with you to read it.
All good.
I would just like to point out, however, that we had a strong emphasis on the two choices, and the point in having just the two choices was to see which choice they valued more, or which was their more, which was their highest priority. And then down here, we, we can say that we are 95% confident that the actual proportion of people who prefer starting after Labor Day is between 41.7% and 54.3%. All right, and then this is the second question that we asked during the phone calls, so hoping you guys can still read. Once again, I'd just like to point out the emphasis on the two choices, therefore showing which choice the person being asked the question valued more. And then we are 95% confident that the actual proportion of people who prefer starting after Labor Day is between 37.7% and 50.2%.
Just to add to this confidence interval, basically what we're saying is that halfway between these two percentages is where most people will fall. And like you'll see with these first three questions, a lot of it falls just within 50/50 of both sides.
And the third question was trying to figure out which they would prefer without other outside factors included. So if you guys want to take a moment and read that. And then we are 95% confident that the actual proportion of people who prefer starting after Labor Day is between 46.1% and 57.9%. And just notice that in all three questions, the responses are split pretty much down the middle, give or take a few percentage points.
I'm Helen Forsythe, I'm a junior at Northfield High School. And this graph that we have represents the responses that we got for questions one through three, and there's a little bit of a typo there on the questions part, part of it got cut off. But it is four questions, one through three, and we lumped those all together in one graph because they all have to do with people's preference as far as school starting before or after Labor Day. So the back beige bars that we have are for the overall results. The maroon are for the secondary school parents, so that includes high school, middle school, and area learning center results. And then the blue, we, that's for the elementary school students, or school, student parents. And so taking into consideration the confidence interval, all these results are really split quite evenly down the middle, 50/50. For our next question, we just wanted to take into consideration whether or not we should remove the shortened weeks or leave them in. So you can just read the next question. And again, we have two options to choose from, leaving the shortened weeks in the school calendar, or reducing the number of shortened school weeks. We can say that we are 95% confident that the actual proportion of people who prefer leaving shortened school weeks in the academic calendar is between 53.1% and 64.9%. And these percentages are a little bit higher than 50%. I think it's more around like 57% of parents who want to leave the shortened school weeks in the calendar. And this graph represents the shortened weeks. The top part is reducing them, and then the bottom blue part is, or represents the parents who want to keep it. And while the elementary bar is around 50, the overall results show that 60% of parents would like to keep the shortened weeks in the calendar.
My name is Peter Schleck, and I'm a senior at Northfield High School. And we received a total of 24 additional comments out of our total of 250 recipients, and out of those 24, nine had suggestions for a change, and a majority of those nine wanted to start the school calendar earlier or before Labor Day. We then had eight recipients who commented and wanted the calendar to remain the same where we start after Labor, Labor Day. Then we had seven off-topic comments, of which a few suggested we eliminate, eliminate Wednesday late starts, a few suggested that we changed the total of, the total number of school days, and one recipient commented that the survey was actually flawed.
I'm Ivy Johnson, I'm a senior as well. To conclude, as a group, we recommend that shortened weeks be left in the school calendar because over 50% of parents felt that was important. However, our community is split about 50/50 when it comes to starting the school year before or after Labor Day. Since we cannot provide you with a strong recommendation, we have come up with considerations for both options. The first option would be to start after Labor Day. Some considerations for that would be that we'd have a longer summer in 2013, spring sports would end with the school year, it would be the same schedule as other districts, and we'd be able to maintain the schedule that everyone's used to. Our second option would be to start school before Labor Day. In this case, we'd be able to finish first semester before winter break. We would have more class time for high-stakes testing like the MCA testing and advanced placement testing. Fall sports would align with the beginning of school, and finally, we'd be able to end school before Memorial Day. That's it? Thank you, do you have any questions?
Thank you so much. I, we really enjoyed hearing about your project, and I really appreciate, I know this is finals week, so for you students to stay and have a meeting, kind of meeting that we're having, we really appreciate your presenting your own results.
Well, this takes care of one final question.
Oh, all right. You get an A from me, I don't know. Board members, do you have questions for the students or for Mr. Kudry? Carrie?
I just want to add my thanks to you for coming in and doing this presentation to help us as best you can with the decision, and I want to thank Mr. Kudry, who repeatedly gives his kids an opportunity to have these kind of real-life experiences. And in this case, I think especially the, kind of the public scrutiny that comes with trying to put a mathematical number to something as personal as, as, you know, people's deeply held opinions. So I think it's just a great opportunity for you, and you did a wonderful job with it.
Board members, any other comments?
I was just wondering, after you did this project, if you started with different notions about what you thought, and then after seeing the data, you had a different impression that changed your mind seeing the data?
Well, I personally didn't think it would be split 50/50. I thought it would sway more one way or the other, but.
It was really interesting to come here tonight and hear all the really passionate opinions either way, and that wasn't something that I was expecting.
Anyone else?
Can I just, I guess, ask the question? As you guys think about the questions that were structured, with the idea that you very much required people to kind of make a forced choice between a before-Labor Day start or an after-Labor Day start. In, in working through and thinking about that, could you talk to us a little bit about why you felt that was the appropriate strategy to use in this assessment? Or, or maybe you could put your teacher on the hook, if you need to. But I, I'm guessing maybe you guys have thought about or talked about why that approach was used, as opposed to something where, where maybe you just gathered whatever comments people gave and, and then tried to figure out where those comments fit. Could you talk to us about that?
I think personally, a lot of people didn't account for all the things that would be affected by the calendar. And once, we would say, one thing would be changed, they would be like, "Oh, I'm in favor of before Labor Day." But then when we would counter it and say, "But then, this is going to happen," then they would switch their answer. So I think it kind of showed that people really didn't know what they wanted, so that's what we kind of resulted with.
I think also our questions gave a definite, if you're gonna have schools start before Labor Day, you're gonna have to give something up in return, and vice versa. So I think that forced people to think about what their priorities were with starting before or after Labor Day.
And I also think that, I mean, generally in this situation, we really only do have two choices. So it's just kind of giving people, I guess forcing people to kind of choose whichever one was their, they valued more, what is more personal to them, sort of, which was interesting as well.
Great, there's no other questions? Thank you again for staying.
My part of the presentation, really, I, I want to really focus in on really three key pieces. I, I want to take a little bit of time to talk about the history of this particular balanced calendar discussion. I think there's been a lot of questions asked about that, and the timing, and why is it moving in a certain way and so on. I want to talk a little bit about the conflicts in, in the timelines between the Minnesota Department of Education and how they approach pieces versus how we typically would approach the same process if we were on our own and were not required to look at particular pieces. Then I want to take some time just to talk about the, the benefits and concerns of the modified calendar, and again, make sure that as board members, you're very clear in terms of what's being proposed in, in the calendars. And what we have provided for you is the recommended calendar from Meet and Confer that's basically a year old, and that if we went to the back to something like that, we would need to reconfirm with the Meet and Confer Committee that this calendar was still their appropriate choice. And then there are three more modified balanced calendars, one that matches off the 13, 14 years, so you can actually see the comparison between the two, and then seeing what 14, 15, 15, 16 would look like using the same balanced calendar strategy. So when we talk about the balanced calendar, I think it's important for us to reflect on the fact that we've actually been having the discussions about the balanced calendar probably for at least five years. And most of those discussions have taken place in the Meet and Confer Committee. The Meet and Confer Committee has teachers that are members of that committee, they have administrators that are members of that committee, and they have school board members that are members of that committee. And as we've looked at calendars, there has been discussion about, are there some ways that we could provide better balance? And whether that would be to address trying to get the end of the first semester to more tightly match up with when we do winter breaks, to try to take a look at, are there ways that, that we could address providing more instructional days before high-stakes assessment? In the end, as I think we've looked at Meet and Confer over several years, typically the committee would revert to, we've got a calendar that looks very similar to the year before, and the only decision typically has been what happens with winter break depending on when New Year's Day falls. And in the past, basically, we would either have one week and several day winter break if there were at least three days left after January 1, and if there were less than three days left after January 1 in the week, typically we would move to moving to a full two-week schedule. So the idea that, that's, that the two weeks is significantly different than it's been in the past, that really has been driven for the most part by where things fall in terms of the calendar. We've also, I think, made the effort, especially over the last few years, to try to align our spring break as mu-, as often as possible with Carlton and St. Olve. And there was a while that was difficult because Carlton and St. Olve were doing spring breaks at different times, but for the last several weeks, I think they must have been talking to each other, and so that's actually happening, and, and so we've been able to kind of align that. We think with, with that process, that does help support not only parents, but also supports having students in that are available for tutoring. In the fall of 2010, Northfield actually met with a number of other districts in the southeast service area, and we were looking at that time to discussing moving to a more balanced calendar. We were looking at the example from the southwest area where 25 school districts had come together as a group. together as a group and said, we're all going to look at a more balanced calendar that starts school earlier, and the focus will be on the idea of getting the alignment of the semesters so that there isn't this two-week overlap after kids come back from winter break, and where we provide more instructional days prior to high-stakes assessment, both MCA testing and AP testing. We spent quite a bit of time discussing that, we shared that information with our Meet and Confer Committee. We also spent a great deal of time at that point going back and forth with the Department of Ed, because at that time, the department was saying to us, the only school districts that they would even consider for being involved in this type of calendar would be if an entire consortium of school districts came together. And so we were feeling the need to, if we were going to look at this, to do it in a consortium. We were also hearing that at that time, the commissioner was not inclined to approve any individual school requests for this type of calendar. We were also being told at that time that the commissioner might take several months to get the calendar approved, even after it might be approved by the local board, and so, and that there was not necessarily any guarantee that that would occur. In fact, we were seeing some school districts who were being denied the ability to go forward with the calendar. So we, again, worked through several months and really into the early months of the 2011, or the 2010-11 school year, early months of 2011, and at that point, we saw things coming apart because people were saying, we can't wait that long, our parents want to know, you know, when the school year is going to start, they need to have an idea so that they can address vacations, address other kinds of things going on in the summer. And so basically, one by one, districts stepped out of that process. By January 2011, we basically then shared our concerns with the board, which chose to exit the consortium, and decided to create just a one-year calendar for 2011-12, which we did, and it was, again, a very traditional calendar. And at that point, we thought, well, we would wait and determine if we should try to take another attempt at a balanced calendar, depending on what the situation was. In the fall, in the winter of 2011-12, Meet and Confer Committee basically developed calendars for two years, for 2012-13, the one we're in right now, and for 2013-14, which is the one you have in your hand that says, recommended by Meet and Confer on 11/19/12. And we shared both of those calendars with the board. The board said, we want to go forward and approve the 2012-13 calendar, but at this point, we're not ready to approve a 2013-14 calendar, because at that time, there was a bill that had been introduced in the legislature to eliminate the statute requiring an after-Labor Day start. And I think people do need to understand that the after-Labor Day start is a creature of the Agriculture Committee, who was lobbied heavily by both the State Fair and by the tourism industry to set that calendar. So over the course of time, over the years in Minnesota, we've not always had an after-Labor Day start. And in fact, Minnesota is one of only a few states that has a mandated after-Labor Day start. About 75% of the school districts in the country right now start before Labor Day, and some of them as much as five or six weeks before Labor Day, clear back in the beginning of August. So at that point, basically, the board said, well, let's not, let's do the 2012-13, but let's not do the 13-14 calendar, let's find out what's going to happen. And the board had asked the administration, explore modified calendar for 13-14, once we knew the results. Well, as you may remember, the results of the legislative session of 2012, it was not very pretty. And they kind of drug on to the end, there were lots of negative, lots of infighting going on, and pretty much, they got to the end of the session, and that particular bill died. So at that point, we knew that there was no change in the statutory prohibition of a before-Labor Day start unless you requested an application for a flex-year calendar. At that point, then, I began starting to make contacts with the Department of Ed to say, what are you planning to do for this next year, for 2013-14? At that point, I was told they were looking at doing some major modifications of the plan and revisions, and they thought they could streamline it and make it more workable. So I kept coming back and asking, how's it going, and how's it going? Finally, was able to get a face-to-face meeting in October with folks at the department. At that point, they told me the revised application for 2013-14 would not be available till mid-December, but that unlike the previous discussions I had had with the department, and that the consortium had had with the department, there did not appear now to be a situation where necessarily a single board, a single district's request would necessarily be denied if they weren't part of a consortium. And so we waited, we were looking to see what was going to happen, we wanted to actually see what the revised application was going to look like. The department is fine with that because their belief is that it is okay to have a deadline for requesting applications for a flex-year calendar, to have those come in in April of the year in which in the fall, you're going to implement the new calendar. So their deadline is April 15. So basically, they were saying, you know, we're fine with getting this done because you'll still have basically eight months before you do this. If we get it to you in December, you have till April 15 to turn it in, and, you know, we'll still need to take the time to determine if we're going to approve it or not, but this would be okay. At about the same time, I was getting the, kind of the final deadline as to when we thought the application would be available for review, was when I contacted Mr. Kudry. I had developed for the Meet and Confer Committee in the fall, the list that you guys, I think, have all seen of the district interests. And what I asked Mr. Kudry to do was to see if he and his statistics students would be interested in surveying families, to look at the concepts of the balanced calendar that we had talked about. And my hope at that time was that looking at a random survey of parents then could be completed so it could be shared with the board, if they chose to move forward. So we shared the key elements with the board on December 10. Again, we did not yet have an application, but I felt it was important for the board, again, to be reminded of those, the members of the Meet and Confer Committee had actually seen those at least two months earlier than that in the fall, when we did Meet and Confer. And at that point, then, the board suggested that, as an administration, we develop some draft balanced calendars for consideration. And in the meantime, I received all the parts of the revised application on December the 20th of 2012. So when we talk about the first issue, and I know a major concern by a number of members of the community, is that there are significant conflicts in the timelines for any kind of modified balanced calendar consideration. Obviously, they're comfortable with the idea that they can finish the application revision in mid-December and give it to districts that are thinking about doing this. And they're fine with the idea that districts could have till the 15th of April to even turn in the application, again, not having the approval yet from the Commissioner of Ed as to that piece. So they feel that it's perfectly okay to only have a few months between when they finally give you approval and when you're supposed to implement the calendar. Further, I think it's important to realize that if you apply for flexible learning year calendar, I think as a couple people mentioned who presented tonight, you are required to implement that calendar in the year the application is given. So if we were to apply this year, based on approval by the board, we would be required to implement in the fall of 2013-14. We do not have the ability to say, you know, we really need more time to look at this, we need more time to give people a head start, or give them an opportunity to adjust their vacation plans, not to have to forfeit any dollars for this summer, for any camps or activities or anything else that students are involved in. And I think it's not through, I think, them being mean-spirited, it's just that they don't have a sense of what that entails when you have to make that decision in a rapid way. When we presented the concepts of the modified calendar with, to the board, prior to the receipt of final application documents, but with the assurance we'd have an opportunity from the department to get that application by the end of December, I think that the board wanted to at least look at what those alternative calendars would look like, and those are the ones we're going to be looking at tonight. Unlike the extended deadline, however, the department has, we have a negotiated local teachers agreement. Basically, that agreement says, actually, in the agreement, that requires a final calendar to be approved by April the 1st. The reality is, past practice and many parent requests over the years have been, you can't wait till April 1st to tell me what's going to be going on in the next year's calendar, we need to know earlier. So our past practice has always been to try to get the calendar approved by the end of February and the beginning of March. And I went back and looked, you know, over the last decade, and in almost every case, it's either been the last meeting in February or the first meeting in March that the board gave final approval. Right now, we still have no guarantee of how quickly the department will turn around the commissioner's decision. I've not heard from the commissioner that it's a slam dunk. I'm glad that's what people are hearing, if we would decide to go that way. But what I also know is, there tends to be politics in the Department of Education because it is an appointed division of the governor's office. And so if something would come up, if there were bills set to do something with required prohibition or whatever, that might not be, I guess we'll automatically approve that. We don't know, and won't know until we actually get the piece in. We also know that before we can do anything, not only did we need to have this meeting to talk about the calendar, but we also then needed to do the three public information meetings as required by state statute. And in looking at what needed to happen, I basically backmapped from when a decision had to be made. So in other words, if we were hoping to get the department to get back to us at the end of February, and it could take, we hope, no more than a month for the department to make a decision on our proposal, that automatically then pushed the public meetings back into January. If we were not concerned about getting it done by the end of February, we could have elongated it out several more months. But I think the reality was, I didn't believe that that would be fair for anybody in the community to wait that long. And so that has definitely squeezed our timeline significantly from what it would normally be. But it is the situation where unlike almost anything else that we do as a school district, the timeline for this process is not our own. We still have to operate under the requirements of the state. And so that really is the reason why we've looked at the structure that we currently have, and it's being proposed. We take a look at the calendars themselves, I guess I want to take just a minute, first of all, just to take a look at physically what the calendars look like, and I only really want to focus on 2013-14 in each of the years. If you lay those side by side, or flip them back to front, or grab an extra copy, then I think there's 150 copies over there, so you should be in good shape if anybody needs another copy. Basically, what you're going to see is, you know, the significant differences are the start date of school, looking at the 13th of August being the start date of school in the modified balanced calendar versus the 3rd of September. We're looking at additional in-service time for teachers ahead of the start of school, again, reflecting what teachers have told us in terms of the need to be prepared better to address assessment issues and other pieces that they're working on. The October is the next area where we see significant differences, and the coarse difference that we see there is a difference between a full week-long break for MEA versus a two-day week for MEA. The reality is, then, what we're really talking about is three-days difference in terms of the number of days that we would take off, combined between the full week off and the end of the quarter, which traditionally, in our other calendar, doesn't happen until November, but here, happens adjacent to the week break. Again, the idea being, having the quarter end at a break, and having a break at that time. Then what we see is, as we go forward, we have really the exact same winter break in both calendars. So again, there is no differential between a traditional calendar and a balanced calendar. It's still a two-full-week situation, and it will be, again, depending on when New Year's falls. And again, this is tradition, in terms of our review of the calendars have tended to be, if we have three days, we believe people will come back. We only have two days, we believe that people will make choices to continue to extend their vacation timeout. So when people say, well, you know, we've added significant time in terms of childcare, et cetera, really, the only differential in the first semester is the fact that you have three more days in October. In the second semester, again, the key piece there is, you reduce some of the shortened week blocks that we have, but we still have a full spring break week on the exact same week that we have it currently, on the 24th. Again, that matches up with Olav and Carlton, has for many years. This particular proposal makes no change in terms of when that is. We, and we've had spring breaks, help me know, for how many years here? It hasn't been forever, but it's been a long time.
I pass.
He passed. Well, it's been the entire time I've been here.
Before Noel.
Before Noel. That's a long time ago. Okay, and then, basically, as we count down the days, that allows the end of the semester in the balanced calendar, for second semester to end on the 21st, with Memorial Day being on the 26th, as opposed to school ending on the 6th of June, with a teacher workday on the 9th. And so that's really, the differences between the two calendars are the start dates, the fact that there's five days instead of three days, excuse me, instead of two days in October, no difference at winter break, no difference at spring break, but fewer part weeks. And if we look at the other two calendars, they're very, very similar. When we take a look at the calendar, basically, I think it's important for us to come back to talk about what the district is trying to do. By state law, our district, as well as every other district in the state, is required to teach to the state standards. And I know that lots of people are concerned when we talk about, are you teaching to the test? But the reality is, state law requires us to teach to the state standards. And how do we measure whether students are proficient on the state standards? The MCA III tests are the way we measure proficiency in meeting standards. And therefore, they provide us feedback about how are we doing on our mission as our school district and on meeting the standards. I think we believe that increased time on task prior to assessment has the potential to increase proficiency. And then, no, there is not a lot of research evidence. There really is no evidence that says, doing what we're doing is any good either. There has really not been There has really not been any, any significant evidence generated. However, there are a couple more recent studies which we've looked at, which shows that if you have more days ahead of the assessments, that student test scores rise, and that 10 or more additional days on, on the front end is where you start to see some impact. Again, that's, that's just a few studies and that's what we've seen. There are no studies I can find that say the calendar strategy that we have right now works. Again, about 75% of the school districts in the country have before Labor Day starts. And the reality is actually, as we, we went back and studied calendars clear back into the 17 and 1800s, I think we've been telling you all along, we thought, gee, this is this terrible agrarian calendar. But actually, if we go back into the 1800s, in school districts and metro areas, they went to school 11 months a year. And in, in the country, they went to school six months a year. And they took a break in the fall, a big break in the fall and a big break in the, in the spring. So they had a break for harvest and a break to plant. So it's, I guess we can't blame it totally, and that's good because we do have FFA members and 4H members and their folks and whatever, and I don't think we want to go there anyway as far as that piece. I think that what we know is that we have state and federal standards that are in place and statutes that basically tell us, we must teach the standards in each of the subjects. We're assessed in reading and mathematics and writing and science on MCA tests and in reading and mathematics on the grad tests. And the, the thing to remember is that even though there is a waiver from some of the elements of NCLB in terms of the sanctions at the federal level, there are still sanctions at the, at the building level that are set by the state, to have to do additional pieces, to have to use resources in certain ways, and obviously on the grad test, at least at this point, unless there's a significant change made in this session, basically starting with the class of 2014-15, a student who does not pass the grad test in reading or mathematics does not get a diploma, regardless of how well they achieve. Otherwise, regardless of what they do in terms of their academic performance or credit completion. And so the tests do mean something, and the tests really are a measure of proficiency. We also know that for many of our students, especially at the secondary level, they do take AP tests. AP tests are a real advantage for students who want to be able to get college-level credit. And we have kids that have taken enough AP examinations that they actually test out of a semester or a year, maybe even more than a year of, of courses. And so again, the MCA tests are set at the national level. Both MCA tests and AP tests, we do not control the dates. The, the college boards control the dates for, for AP testing. Those are scheduled. Right now, MCA tests are controlled by the state of Minnesota. They set the dates. And so we do have some pieces there that we don't have control. Having been involved on two different state assessment committees over the last decade, and despite repeated efforts to try to adjust it, we have not seen changes in terms of when the tests are going to be provided. And so I don't anticipate that's going to change at this point. We do hope there will be some work done on the grad test. I think we also really believe strongly, and I wish, the one thing I guess I wish I'd asked the kids, although it would have probably violated their, their work as professional, non-professional, but very much appreciated student assessment and survey people, is to ask our students about how they feel about having the semester end before winter break. My sense and the teachers I've talked to would tell me, most kids want to see those assessments completed and exams and papers done before they go on break. And teachers will tell me that coming back after break, there is a chunk of time when students have to be brought back up to speed, reviewed and worked with in order for them to be ready to take the tests two weeks later. I think if we think about it, think about colleges. There used to be some colleges, I can remember when I went to college back somewhere right after the Stone Age, we still were, were taking, we were going home at, at winter break and coming back after winter break and then taking our finals. I don't know of any college right now in the country that doesn't end their fall term before they take winter break. Now, most of them now generated, developed some kind of J-term that they handle to deal with the, the midpiece. But they know too that, that students will lose significant instruction and significant readiness to take those tests if they wait and come back. I think we've also reviewed the impact of shifting the calendar into August, and I guess some things that I do need to make sure people understand, if there's questions. We have air conditioning in every building. We have the ability to, to air condition every building to make it comfortable. And the reality is, we already are firing up air conditioners in every one of our buildings in August for the majority of the month because teachers are back and principals are back. And I've actually had our building grounds people do the calculations to say what, what the cost, and it is not very much money. It's less than $10,000, they believe, to run the air conditioning for those extra three weeks in August. I think as a superintendent and as a leader of our administrative team, we absolutely understand that there would be major impact in doing this on summer plans for parents and, and students, especially during that last three weeks in August. We, we know that and believe that we need to look at the impact or the benefit of more instructional days prior to high-stakes testing and of getting the end of the semester completed before winter break. But we do know that especially going forward for this fall, it's going to be extremely difficult for people because if we have to implement it the way the department wants us to implement it, we're basically saying to people who already bought vacation tickets, already arranged cabins, already have set up things to go forward, that they can't do that. I also know, and we heard eloquently from our 4H folks and our FFA folks tonight, those are pieces that are going, that would be very difficult because they are, they have literally days that they're involved with those activities. And the only way we have to look at that right now is to look at the results of the data from the Southwest group, the 25 districts in the Southwest that have done this. They don't show that, they show that the number of students that have been involved in those activities has actually grown some over the course of the last three years. And so there, I think, parents and students have worked it out in terms of saying, what is the appropriate piece? But I also know that that puts students and parents where they have to make a difficult choice, and I'm in no way downplaying that. As far as employment, which is another piece we've, we've heard from people, absolutely in the first year, it's going to have a negative impact on hours typically beginning in, in mid-August because the students that are there, who are, are going to be there to manage the pool and whatever, are no longer available. And so they tend to have only a short number of hours available after about the 15th of August. And we know that we would also significantly adjust our summer activities in terms of summer plus and all the other pieces to address it. I think, finally, I think we, we do need to remember that we have a significant portion of this community that does not have access to any of the options that we've heard tonight. We have elementary buildings right now with 43% of the students in poverty. Those students are not going to be eligible or available for, and very likely for summer camps, for necessarily for, for 4H or FFA, and more because of where they live. But we also need to help support those students and make sure that they have the resources that they need. I think we also, just over the years, I think as administrators, have heard many times from parents telling us that their students are ready to come back in August. And potentially would benefit strategically from, from the breaks that coincide with the end of quarters and semesters. Now, one of the pieces of data that I didn't have for, as I even tried to build these calendars, was the, the piece that said, the one part where we saw in the random sample, that we actually saw more of a, of a, of a push towards breaks was the concept of maintaining the more shortened breaks during the year. And that, that could be used or built into any kind of modifications we'd look at for the balanced calendar because it might say, instead of starting, you know, the, the week of, of the 12th, we might be able to start the week of the 19th because we might be able to take enough days from the October piece, put the break and the, the two-day EM break and the one-day and a quarter break in the same week and basically set that up, which would actually change or modify that and maybe go from three weeks to a two-week piece. Finally, I think as, as we, we take a look at the data from the survey that the students provided, and I understand, you know, not everybody's comfortable with that type of a survey piece. However, I have a lot of faith in, in the fact that Mr. Kudry has tried to build a survey that would help us to get some usable data. And I believe that as we take a look at the balance, the balance probably says to us that it's a toss-up as to, as to where the community is at this point. Yes, we have a number of people who've signed a petition, who've shared their email with you and whatever, and they represent and have every right to represent their opinions. But in terms of the survey documentation, we actually show that there are a number of other parents that probably are not represented here, who are much more balanced in terms of their piece. That's why you do random surveys, to get a balance of a random implementation, a random review, as opposed to something where basically the people with the strongest opinions come for it. So that's what I'd like to share with you tonight. It's just the overview of the calendar, helping you to see why we've, we've had the process and tried to work through the process. It is not the best process that we could use, but we are not totally in control of that. That we do believe that, that we have good reason to look at this as a, as an option or possibility, and that, you know, we, we are ready to move forward if the board wishes to do so. I guess I would also say to you as a board, you've had an opportunity to hear from a lot of people tonight, and I think if at this point, your sense is, this is not something that you're comfortable moving forward with, please know that, that as a district and as an administrative team, we will support the decision of the board. We want to do what's best for the district, but we do feel that at times that we do need to push the envelope, we do need to ask people to think outside the box, and we do need to look at where this is. And maybe it's a different strategy that we need to use to get there, but I think it's important as a board for you to look at the fact that there may be some different ways to do things than the way we've done so far. Okay? Questions that you have about anything I presented to you tonight?
So, thank you, Dr. Richardson, and thank you to the community members who came here to share their opinion. Board members, Dr. Richardson has provided us a really good summary of the history of the district in considering different calendars and the Minnesota Department of Education's process and deadlines and the district's requirements based on bargaining units. And since December, when Dr. Richardson presented his initial thoughts and the, some of the district thoughts on balanced calendars, board members have really received a wide range of input and impressions, some of the comments tonight on how it, the impact on summer activities, and a range of suggestions on different types of other calendars to consider. One of the themes that I thought kind of emerged tonight and in, in the emails and the grocery store conversations was people talking about educational research, which I like, and talking about how it supports or refutes this or that. And a big part of my day job involves assessing kind of educational research, so I thought it might be helpful for board members if I just give you a really quick, like, three-pronged approach that I use. So first, educational research is focused on a complex system. So you can't think of A simply causing B. We have a system of interconnected parts to consider. One example we always hear about is class sizes, and there's a magic number of 13 and 15 students in a class. But if you really dig into the research, you'll find it's really a level of student engagement that becomes possible because of, maybe a magic number, but, and so you can't really just look at the face value when you're thinking about educational research. You have to think about it as a system. So the second thing is cost and return on investment. And this is particularly here, where we're considering a public education. So we'd love to have class sizes of 13. It might not be scalable in our, in our current budget. So that's the second thing is economics. And the third is really important to understand the context when you think about educational research. So what works or what doesn't work in Chicago or Laverne, Minnesota, where my husband's from, may or may not have the same effect in Northfield. And I thought rather than just telling you this from my perspective, I thought I'd share with you what the National Science Foundation states about educational research. All educational research is embedded in a value system or is set of beliefs on how the world is structured. So board members, I really think it's important in considering the calendar, and we'll have more issues other than the calendar in front of us this year, that we think about our students' learning within the values and context of Northfield. So while we can't change the Minnesota Departments of Education's schedule or process, we can consider the pace of our own decision-making, and we can consider the type of engagement that our community has come to expect from the board. So I, I really appreciate Dr. Richardson's helping us think outside the box and providing us this history and some of the ramifications that, and thinking about the state that I would really encourage board members to consider in Northfield, too. So I open it up for questions and comments. Carrie?
Just thinking about what you said about the, the value system of Northfield and kind of taking that in the context of Dr. Richardson's kind of reminding us of the timelines and the regulatory framework within which we're making this decision, I think it's really important to, to, to remember that and to understand kind of the, the box we've been put into a little bit by the, the way the Department of Ed has handled this issue. With respect to the, the values of the community, I think all you folks who have stayed here all this long meeting and the many people who spoke before, you know, you're expressing one of the many points of view that we've heard on this, and, and we've heard from a lot of people. And the, the opinions have varied all over the map. There are many, like those of you who are here tonight, who just say no, keep the calendar as it is, don't change anything. We've heard from people who say, yes, great idea, why have you waited this long to do it? We've heard from people who like the idea of change, but, you know, want to tweak the dates a little bit. We've had people, many of you tonight, talked about how it would negatively affect your family time. We've heard from people who say it would very positively affect their family time. We've heard from people who want more instructional days to be added to the calendar if we're going to fuss with it, and we've heard from people who want fewer instructional days. So, you know, the opinions are really, really all over the map, but the, the common theme, and I think this is where it really comes to the, the values of our community, the common theme that I hear through, really everything everyone is saying is that they want our decision to be driven by a desire to improve student learning. And I know that there, even within this group, there's, there's kind of differing opinions on how we define learning. You know, the, the 4H students will say... Um, you know, the, the 4-H students will say they've, they've had wonderful learning experiences and experiential learning and the leadership opportunities, and the things that families do as a family, that's learning too, and do the tests, really measure learning, you know? But I think, as a community, we are driven by a desire to improve student learning. And as a district, we're committed to a process of continuous improvement, and I think the calendar really needs to be part of that scrutiny. We look at all our other programs to see how we can improve them, to improve student learning, and, and I think that the, the calendar needs to be an essential part of looking at how that might be changed to improve student learning. So that's why I really support taking a look at this. What I would like to suggest for the board's consideration really is that we take advantage of all this energy around the calendar question, so that we can kind of marshal it into a very thoughtful, deliberate, community conversation about how the calendar can best support improved learning for our students. We've got a huge group of people, the petition, the folks who are here tonight, all the other folks who've communicated with us, who have kind of self-selected as being very interested in this issue, and I think this is a golden opportunity to really harvest that energy and have a very thoughtful conversation. If we decided to go forward with something that would require, you know, any kind of department approval, we're still going to be in that, in that time box that the, that the department has set up for us. But, you know, what I've been trying to think about is if there's a way to kind of work outside that regulatory constraint to have a really thoughtful conversation. And so what I would propose is that we have really in-depth community conversations that begin, or continue, you know, tonight, that we would have frequent updates to the board on how those conversations are going and the topics that they're covering, similar to what Mr. Hillman did with the transformational technology process. So we'd really keep the calendar question in the news and in the public's mind, all the different things that, that, you know, are percolating out there, all the different ideas for the next, you know, however many months it takes. And if at some point, those communicate, community conversations kind of reach some sort of consensus around a, a change to the calendar, and if that change would require approval from the department, then the board could, you know, vote on a process to proceed with that, and we could vote on that, you know, proceeding with that process well in advance of when we'd be put in that regulatory box. We're still going to be constrained by the department unless they, you know, wake up and understand the reality that school boards live in, but I think there would be a much higher level of community awareness about what we're thinking about, and, you know, we, you know, we're still going to be in that regulatory box. I mean, I can't promise you we'd get out of that, but it would give us an opportunity to just have a, have a longer conversation and have more community awareness about it. I do appreciate the administration's efforts to try to pursue this alternative, even within this horrible timeline that we were put in. I, I don't think anybody on the board and the administration really understood what kind of box it would put us in, how compressed that schedule would be, and I know that we all feel very bad about having it be such a compressed schedule. So, you know, as a practical matter, if, if the board wanted to pursue this, what I would suggest is that we discontinue efforts to obtain department approval for a pre-Labor Day start date for 1314. I, I think we could cancel the three public meetings that we currently have scheduled. I, I would suggest that the board then direct administration to bring back to us for the 1314, a more traditional post-Labor Day calendar, and go through whatever processes, you know, meet and confer and all that that need to be done for that. But then that we really commit to a very deliberate process to have a conversation about how our calendar can be improved to support improved learning for all our students. I don't want to lose this momentum. You know, we've got a lot of energy around this, and I really want to marshal that. So, you know, my suggestion would be that we, we get a plan from administration, you know, as soon as the next meeting, on how that process is going to work. You're going to have all kinds of time, because we don't have the public meetings.
But we have at least five or six other big projects we're working on. You're going to have to give us some breathing room to, to put this together, and if we're not looking at 1314, I would like to have more time to prepare that, man, if, if possible. That's up to the board, obviously.
Well, that's, that's my suggestion, and if, you know, if the board is interested in pursuing that, we can.
So are you looking, are you considering a motion to add an action item?
Well, yes, I'll do that. I, I will, I will move to add an action item to the agenda, and the action item would be a motion with respect to the 1314 calendar and future calendar processes, like what I outlined, and then I can put that motion out there. But if, if anyone's interested in amending the agenda to add an action item, to provide direction to the board or to the administration with respect to the 1314 calendar, I'd make that motion.
I'll second that. Okay, so there is a motion on the table to amend the agenda to include in the items for individual action of amendment to...
A motion to direct administration.
Administration. All right, and there's a second. Any, any discussion on the motion?
I rate both.
A motion to amend the agenda to add an action item.
Yeah, this is just the motion to amend the agenda to add an action item.
So that we talk about it later.
Right.
Well, you can't approve it in, in a discussion report.
Right.
You've got to prove it in a, in individual action.
In your individual action, so we're just adding that.
So you just have to get the horse.
So, before we can just, so we've got a motion and a second to amend the agenda, all right? Any discussion on, on that motion? No, all right. All those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aaron, have you got that?
It's a good test.
All right, we, we'll work on it, and we always have Ellis's fearless record, so we'll be able to come back and get back to it.
Can I suggest that, because there's so many people here, we jump forward and do this action item?
I think you can do, as a board, whatever you would like to do, so that people know exactly where things are.
We would need, we would need a motion to do that.
Okay, so now I'll, I'll make my formal motion now. It's a four-part motion.
Okay, under item A4.
Okay, so this would be a motion directing administration to first discontinue efforts to obtain approval from the Department of Education for a pre-Labor Day start date for the 1314 school year. And then secondly, to cancel the three public meetings that are currently scheduled to consider the pre-Labor Day start calendars. And to bring to the board a traditional post-Labor Day calendar for the 1314 school year, for the board to consider for approval. And to develop a process to engage the community in conversations about how our school calendar can be improved to support improved learning for all students.
Four-part motion on the table, to discontinue efforts to, for a pre-Labor Day 2013-2014 calendar, to cancel the three public meetings that are currently scheduled to talk about the pre-Labor Day start and get input to, the third item is to, for the administration to bring to the board a traditional 2013-2014 calendar, and the fourth is to develop a process to engage the community in conversations about how the school calendar could be improved to better support all student learning. So we have a motion on the table, we would need a second before we can discuss.
I'd like to second that.
Second it, okay. Is there any discussion? John?
Well, I think we've had a lot of discussion and presentations about this, and one of the things that concerned me about the 4-H students is that the young lady said that she learned how not to procrastinate, and I spent years in 4-H and never learned how not to procrastinate.
But...
That was what I was...
But now you're a lawyer.
So, yeah, but I think as we've, we've had these, these conversations, and when this was first proposed, I was, I was under the, under the understanding that we could, you know, approve this for future years and just discuss it, and that's what I understood we were, we were talking about as we were first discussing this. And that we cannot, you know, have a, give people the proper notice of such a significant change in the calendar is what concerns me most about doing this, and that is why I support this motion, because I think that if we're going to make a significant change like this, people need more than a few months' notice. And I think it's perfectly reasonable that people have plans for the end of August already. But, you know, when the argument is, this would be inconvenient for me, well, it would be inconvenient for me too, but that's not the basis of my decision. What I want to hear from, from the administration and what I want to hear from the community when we're talking about this is, what is most beneficial for students? And it isn't, you know, we like to have summer off, because you can't just go to school only on the nice days. You can't, or only on the rainy days, right? You can't only go to work on, on rainy days. We also have to, we also have to do things on, on nice days and get things done when we'd rather be outside. And so that alone is not, I think, a, a strong argument. I think the strong arguments are what are, what are best for the students. I, I haven't been as convinced that it's going to improve test scores, but I do think there's some benefit maybe to having the, the calendar end at the quarters and getting, you know, having that stuff all tied together. That all makes sense to me. The AP scores thing is another thing, having the AP tests around the time that the semesters end is also something that makes a lot of sense to me, and I would like to see a way that we can do that. But I think we have to do something significant like this with a lot of notice to the community, and people have to have the opportunity to plan their lives.
Thanks, John. Other, Noel?
Yeah, I wish to comment on this issue, and I prefer notes because I don't want to ramble, and I'm not proficient at speaking off my cuff.
You were in 4-H.
Like... I was in voice cuffs. I'm not proficient at speaking off my cuff as our lawyer and colleague, John, is. So you, you need to bear with me. It seems to be a cantankerous issue for some of the community and the board member. I appreciate your interest and your comments and your thoughts, and when you stop in the community or, as Carrie said, in the grocery store, I really value that commentary, and please, you don't, you're not interrupting me, you're intruding me or anything. I appreciate it. I think Dr. Richardson did exactly what the board asked him to do, and that is what we're reviewing tonight. School board is currently considering possible modifications to the school calendar, possible modification of school calendar, and then he later published the dates and the times. The school board is, as I've read in some of the emails, the school board is recommending a change to the school calendar, and that is not true, that is not accurate. We are not recommending a change to the school calendar. We are hearing the issue, which is a wonderful way to be able to discuss an opportunity, and I see it as an opportunity. With any other important issue that we have in front of the board, I look forward to public hearings where the parents and taxpayers can speak for all to hear, and where anyone speaking is able to support or reject an idea right there at the moment. We hear all of your comments, and frequently we hear the pros and cons, but also excellent ideas that we haven't even thought about, something that is, is important to you that we hadn't thought about and really does need to be considered. On this issue of the school calendar, I have made up my mind, and I say, why would I? There's nothing to be gained from having made up my mind prematurely. Please know that I have received, and here's an editorial, "I've received about a hundred emails on the issue," which is fine, "but some of them for the third and fourth time, the same exact email, and it's much like yelling the same thing over and over in my ear. It annoys me and eventually causes me to question the state of the sender." So, just for the record, please know that in 1980, when I first ran for Northfield School Board, I discussed the proposal of having schools operate 12 months a year. I still support that. Where teachers would, a lot of discussion here, but teachers would teach nine of the 12 months, students would attend nine of the 12 months. I still believe the 12-month calendar that most of the world uses is an effective method to deliver education. Most of the United States doesn't deliver a year-round K through 12 education, and that may explain why globally, the United States is 25th from the top. Having said all this, I'd probably support the traditional calendar when it comes to a vote. But I also support Carrie, and, and did with my vote, that we continue this discussion of the calendar. And as an aside, I said, the Stone Age didn't quit because we ran out of stones. Stone Age quit because there was a better idea presented, and, and that's what I'm looking for, and I'm optimistic that we'll find one.
All right. Other comments, Anne?
I just have a personal comment about a balanced calendar approach, and it just so happens that my family has had opportunity to live abroad and to be in a balanced calendar situation with a, a really balanced set of study, then time for being off, and then more study. And that was in, in France, and it's very similar, for example, that kind of approach in Finland, which is, I think, still sort of up there at the top for, for education. And it was different for my family, and my children really liked it, and, and liked it better than what they had here in Northfield as far as the rhythm of the, of the calendar. It was very family-friendly as well. I, I really liked it. So it's not that scary, it's not really that different, it's just a little bit different rhythm, and I found it to be quite, quite good experience for my kids.
Rob?
Oh, good, did I get to talk? I just want to thank everyone for making my first meeting extra special.
Rob, there will be others.
Yeah, yeah. Not likely to be the last, sir.
I think that I'm really pleased with this, the way this is turned with Carrie's suggestion. I think as an educational institution, drawing the entire community into the educational process to learn more about this issue is really important, because I've been wading through all kinds of research and looking at numbers and not, not being a social scientist, not knowing how to do it, having that kind of conversation about what is the impact of time on education? How do you structure that time most effectively? I mean, I looked at the scores from that, from the consortium in southwestern Minnesota, and I can't see any effect of the, the calendar change on those scores, but, you know, like I say, I'm not a social scientist, we, I think, I think we'd all learn a lot in this educational institution if we have those conversations. I'm being really non-eloquent right now. But, yeah, I think that this process that's been a kind of trickle-down of frustration from the state level to Dr. Richardson's level, to the community's level, is not a good process, so I'm really pleased at the idea of stopping it and having a real conversation and learning things, all of us together, about this. Thanks.
Julie?
Well, you know, I appreciate all the comments that, that board members have made, and I, I agree with the direction as Rob has said that we're, we're choosing to take on this, and if I, as I sit and reflect on our focus as a board and as a district, it has always been on accruing student achievement for all students. And since my time on the board, we've implemented PLCs, flexible learning groups in the elementary schools, response to intervention, and transformational technology with the use of iPads. And as a progressive school district, we need to be open to new ideas and concepts and to really further, fully explore that an alternative schedule could, or alternative calendar, excuse me, could significantly accelerate achievement levels. But I do believe it's extremely important that we bring all the stakeholders in and to, to really do the extensive research and then to have a debate on their merit for our students and for the community, and that's with a time... And that's with a timetable that this community is comfortable with. I also want to echo what some of the board members have said and really thank the parents, community members who share their perspective and for being engaged in this issue. And as Carrie said, I hope that they choose to stay engaged in not only this issue, but other issues that we face as a district.
Ann?
I just have one more thing. When I first got elected to the school board, I had a meeting with Carrie, who was chair, and she put our mission statement right in front of me. And I'd like to just read that and remind the board members of our mission statement. And I think it's really relevant here. And so I brought it in. Our mission, the mission of the Northfield Public Schools is to deliver educational excellence that empowers all learners to participate in our dynamic world. And I think as we go ahead and talk about this issue and other future issues coming and how to best fit our mission should always be right there in the front of our minds.
Other comments or questions?
Well, I wanted to also just echo what Noel said. I think, I wanted to thank Dr. Richardson. I think this is what we want our superintendent to do, is to think outside the box and to bring us new ideas and to be always pushing for how can we improve student learning. And I think that's the kind of community we are, is to look for new ideas. And I appreciate the motion and the second that we consider continuing to engage the public in this process and think about a timetable and a pace for our decision-making that needs, Northfield's needs better. So we have a motion, a four-part motion and a second. And we've had discussion. Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? Any discussion? No? All right. All those in favor of the motion, and once again, it was to discontinue the pre-Labor Day calendar, looking at that, to cancel the three public meetings, to ask the administration to bring a traditional 2013, 2014 calendar for the board to consider, and last, to develop a process to engage the community in further conversations about how the school calendar can better support student learning. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We are 9:45 and we're nearing 10 o'clock, but we have many, many items on the agenda yet. So.
Ellen?
Yes.
There are a lot of people here that aren't regulars. Would you explain for all of us that we oftentimes have five or six different items that we hear and then we move to the action? And so in front of us, we have five more, six more, seven more items, six more items, before we go to individual action. So it will be a while before some of the issues are going to be dealt with by motion. Or maybe I just explained it.
You did.
You did. You just did explain it, yes.
Thank you very much, Noel. All right. So, board members, while we had moved the one individual item for action, we are back at item for discussion report and that is the second item, which is the Eagle Bluff Environmental Learning Center trip.
Now I know what the monkeys felt like the night they had to take the stage after Jimi Hendrix. It was not as exciting, but anyway. Well, first of all, we just want to reframe while we're here again, Erin Mayberry and myself, Jeff Petcher, the middle school principal. And we came before you in December to let you know about some possible issues related to the annual 7th grade Environmental Learning Center field trip. And I'll reframe those right now. One was that with an extraordinarily large 6th grade class that will be 7th graders next year, the model that we have been using, the data that we have collected over the past six years would indicate that we would not have enough space for a traditional trip. And so we wanted to give you, the board and everybody else involved, time to ponder how we might go about dealing with that in a one-year scenario. Also, over the past six years, there have been some things that we'll present in the slide here that really have been waiting for a chance to review them, but we have spoken to you in the past about what a high-quality experience it is to go to Eagle Bluff for the overnight trips. And so they just never rose to the level where we would stand before you at a late hour and really look at some tough decisions. But when the space issue came up, it also made sense to do a review like we do with all programs periodically to see if they still meet our needs. And speaking of the chronology, since we met with you in December, we have also, Dr. Richardson, and I have met with a number of our faculty members at the middle school, and we have taken in all of their input. We've had several community members make contact through phone calls or emails and express their thoughts on this matter. We've collected that. We had a public meeting last Thursday where many of the board members attended and also a number of community residents, parents, staff members came to participate in that and we collected all that information. And so what we're going to do is quickly, because I know a lot of the board members have seen this presentation, it's been posted up on our website, we will quickly review the slides again. And not because it doesn't warrant more time, but I know that if it's familiar to you, I would rather have you slow us down and ask questions during the presentation than spend too much time in the details of it. And by all means, we'll close the presentation and entertain questions that you have so that we can look at the action item that is in front of you tonight. And I do also want to not only once again reinforce the quality of experience that we have had, so this is not having to do with the quality of experience, and also as a science teacher and as a former environmental educator and as a professional scientist during my breaks for the past 20-some years, I obviously am very interested in environmental education, but my role right now is as the principal to make sure that we not only let you know about the numbers crunch for next year, but some of the things that have emerged over the years that have been pretty consistent and require us to take an analytical view of them. In the past several years, less than half of the 7th grade core teachers have participated in the ELC trip. And once again, it's important to note, it's not because they don't support the trip, but if you're going to maintain a trip for 10 years, 20 years, people are not always going to be able to stop their life and leave their families for three years. It's an extension of their workday, an extreme extension. And so it just hasn't averaged out now that about half the 7th grade core teachers are able to go. During the same time, it's been difficult to fill the faculty chaperones spaces. So about half the teachers come from other parts of the building, which then has an impact on instruction besides just the 7th grade that's taking a break for the ELC trip. And since the original transition to the ELC trip from elementary level to middle school, we've added all kinds of things that we think are important to help connect our staff and students together. We'll go ahead to the next one. So the questions that we have looked at is, if an average of a third of the 7th grade students choose not to attend the ELC program, do we believe that all 7th graders are receiving a uniform curricular experience? It's a great experience, but it's not reaching everybody, so what can we do about that? If less than half of the 7th grade faculty is able to participate in the ELC program, do we believe that all students and staff are developing strong relationships as a result of this experience? And if more than half of the staff who participate in the ELC program have teaching duties other than 7th grade, what's the impact to their classes as they commit to helping out with the Eagle Bluff trip? And if we maintain the current ELC program and, as we talked about, issue number one, if we have to limit participation next year, will it be seen as a system that's fair and equitable? What's consistent about the options that we're going to look at, and we want to let you know that the options that you'll see tonight are different than what was presented the first time here because we've merged all that public input into it and we actually had some options that we weren't even thinking about before and they came directly from these various sources of input. Now what's consistent is community services would handle the participant registration. In some models, they'll handle more, but for sure, that is one of the greatest inconveniences. And we have talked about in our first presentation, we share with you the costs of running the program, but looking at it has nothing to do with the cost because almost all the costs are borne by the actual fees of the participants or the scholarships that pay for them. So it's not really a money issue. The only thing that doesn't get compensated for is the clerical and administrative time to go into running the trip in our finite amount of duties that we have. And if community services were actually using their systems to do something that they are very skilled and capable of doing, that becomes a wash on that respect. So we're looking at that and all the options. And if participants are eligible to request scholarships from the Merle Houston State Environmental Education Trust Fund, regardless of what option we use, which is really important, meaning no student gets turned away. We have not turned any students away because of their ability to pay and we would not in any model. Because that trust fund was set up for environmental education, it doesn't say anything about this is for overnight trips. And the logistics would be handled by a compensated trip coordinator. There's a lot of knowledge, expert power that's been built up over the years by the people who have done the nuts and bolts of running these trips and so we want to take advantage of that again. So we'll look at option number one. And it's clear that, it's important to note that we still have a reservation for next year at Eagle Bluff and it's set for October 30th and November 1st. That's the same timeframe that we have traditionally used. And they have a capacity for about 200 students. You may have heard from some public input about, well, they can squeeze more into there and that requires some different models that really our school hasn't been interested in the past, throwing mattresses in the floor, things like that, where we're aware that we could squeeze a few more in. We haven't had to do that in the past and we're not recommending that we necessarily do that in the future, but that could be an option. So that 200 is kind of our working number. Participants could anticipate a high-quality experience with faculty chaperones drawn from various grade levels at Northfield Middle School. The option would follow most of the historical protocol established in recent years, with the exception of filling the limited spaces as the registrations were received, similar to how community services runs the other programs. And approximately 160 students in this option, most likely if our six years of data indicate or hold true, about 160 would participate in alternate coursework with similar learning objectives at school. Option 1A is to take that reservation that we have and split it in half and therefore not turn away any students who wish to go, separate it into basically day and a half trips and use that same block of time that we have available. So there's no more instructional time that is disrupted. It is an overnight experience, but it's about half the length. The participants could anticipate a high-quality experience again with faculty chaperones from the various Northfield Middle School grade levels and programs. The option would modify our historical protocol because you're setting two groups and Eagle Bluff would have the option of using whatever space was available because whatever students signed up to go, we'd go, there'd be extra space that could be left vacant, or they could book another smaller school or other program in with that space. Right now, when we do go, we have the entire campus to ourselves. And in this model, if everybody who wants to go gets to go, there could still be about 110 students who would stay back, that choose to stay back and participate in alternate coursework, just like option one. Option two would be trips hosted by community services. These trips would be scheduled with close proximity to the start or end of the school year. They would also be scheduled during, they could be scheduled during breaks. If there was a balanced school calendar, that would facilitate that. We're not looking at that for next year now. So in a traditional school calendar, we'd be looking at right at the end of the school year or right before the beginning of the school year. And there are dates available at Eagle Bluff and there's dates available at other excellent environmental learning centers within a reasonable drive. In this model, any licensed teacher or a similarly qualified person would be eligible to apply to serve as the staff chaperone. So if this was open to residents, students of an identified age range, anybody that's a resident student in this district would be able to participate regardless of where they went to school or if they were homeschooled. And also, an Arcadia student or a homeschool student and somebody who has the correct training could also be considered as a chaperone for that trip and play that teacher role as well. We could look at all the ELCs that are available because we have more flexibility on the transportation time. It's not being cut so fine. And the ELC experience would be an enriching supplement to regular school-based instruction instead of this switching that we currently do. We substitute one thing for another. We substitute a very good thing for another good thing, but there is inconsistency between what everybody is doing. And then option three, and this came basically, what was derived from the feedback that we have from staff talking about, it's really important for the current teachers and the current students and the whole group have this connecting experience. And if there are a third of the students choosing not to go on an overnight trip, and there are lots of reasons why they choose to do that because, once again, it's two and a half days out of their life. If we looked at day trips, a day trip or day trips, we could actually, within the contract, they have the full faculty and associated staff that work with students go with those students. Every student who had permission from their parents would be able to go. We anticipate that, you know, you have a 90-something percent participation rate. Typically on a field trip, we have a 98, 99 percent participation rate. So we expect that that would happen in those day trips. And the objectives could be what teachers told us was most important, the outdoor team building activities and environmental education and, of course, getting off-site, retreating to a different setting, which is in a scenic area and kids get dirty and they get cold and they get hot and all those fun things that happen when you get outside. And so they could possibly be scheduled as two separate events to make sure that each day trip was able to really fully go into what the accomplished objectives were. We talked about all the students could participate, all the staff could participate. It fits into the contract that we have. We wouldn't have to talk about extending the day for the staff. And like we said, the current students would work with the current staff and that would benefit them in their current setting for the school year. And those are the options that we have before you. After we've processed all the input that we have looked at, created these options, had them out there and looked it over from the perspective that we initially brought it to, with community services and the middle school administration together, we are making a recommendation and we also understand that this is not an easy decision to make. We appreciate the thoughtful process that the board has put into this, much like they do everything else. And we are enthusiastically behind whatever option is decided. But because of the numbers crunch, we do need to at least make a decision about next year and it's also the time to look ahead at, you know, what does happen when two-thirds of the students participate in something for three days and another third do not. So our recommendation that you'll be seeing in the action, I think it makes sense to at least share that right now, is that we would look at offering day trips with the 7th grade students and the 7th grade staff participating, that they could be one or two trips, depending on whether we combine environmental education and the team-building type activities together in one trip or if we looked at them separately. We have researched, just extensive general research, that there are many options available in our geographic area. And that we would also offer a residential overnight trip through community services outside of the school year. So the students who really do, are excited and do feel comfortable with staying overnight get the opportunity to have the night hike and the campfire and hitting each other pillows and all the stuff that are the memories that many students carry forward and we don't want to dismiss how important that is to them. And so there would be an opportunity for them to do that. Some students could potentially do both of these in their 7th grade year and some would choose to just participate in the day trips if that's what they're most comfortable with. So that's what the recommendation would be. Erin is also here and she would love to answer your questions that you have. And was there anything in the presentation?
No, I think.
For the community services?
No. Stuff has covered it all.
I was talking fast, I know, because I realized we're clock watching.
So, board members, I actually was mindful of the clock rather than, I know we want to have a good discussion about this and many of the other items on our agenda. So I know, well, Noel said we typically don't have motions during items for discussion report. I would like to ask for a motion that we will continue our meeting past 10:00 PM?
Move that.
Moved by Carrie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor of continuing the meeting past 10:00 PM, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Questions, comments for Jeff and Erin?
We're sorry you've had to make that motion twice in a presentation we've given.
That's true.
I do want to clarify that Eagle Bluff, we talked about in some of these options, we have that reservation and they're expecting us to let them know where we stand tomorrow. So we do need to take, I do believe, I'm not directing, but I do believe that we need some action for at least next year's trip so that we can at least plan short-term or near-term with that.
Rob?
I asked you this before, but just so everyone is clear on this, I think it's important that if it's a summer trip that's for team building, that it happened before the 7th grade year rather than the summer before and after. If it's going to be before for this upcoming 7th grade class, then there has to be time available in this coming summer, dates available. So we need to make, I want to make sure. sure before we consider that, that there is actual time available this summer, preferably in August, so that it could be right before this little year for the seventh graders.
And we did discuss this over the weekend and I shared the schedule of what times were available at Eagle Bluff specifically and when we put together this presentation, Amy Allen, who was the coordinator of the trip, did just a wonderful job of scouting out not only options for Eagle Bluff but all around the area. And there were trips available right nearby our dismissal time and also right before the school starts timing a traditional calendar. I can't guarantee that, you know, those haven't been booked over the last month, but I think there's a good chance that they're available and I think there's an even better chance if you throw the net out a little bit wider that we could find a quality place within a reasonable drive that could do that. You know, we have to look into that, we just, we were hesitant with all these options to put too much effort into any one direction, not knowing which way it would end up. But at the time that we checked last, there were those opportunities available.
Noel?
The option three that looks at day trips, what would be the cost per student for that option?
Considerably less than the overnight trips. We've looked at some programs that are as little as $15 a student, some that are as much as $70 a student. It all depends on where we go and what we're trying to accomplish, so what transportation we take, how long we stay there, which facility we use. Some facilities, you know, if they're run by scouts or YMCA, you know, if that's the operating organization, they're rather inexpensive. And some, you know, some organizations run programs, team building or adventure-type courses for profit and those are going to be a little bit more. Either way, they end up being considerably less than the $170 that students pay for the overnight experience.
May I ask one?
Yeah, absolutely.
It would seem to me then that if this were an educational experience during the day, that I wouldn't expect the student to pay for it. It's an educational experience within the framework of the education.
Yes, and because we do run a lot of field trips at the Middle School, there are many of them that we do request payment from the families and then we provide scholarships for those that don't, so it's like a voluntary payment to support the trip. And so you are right that if we did run a trip, students would be able to go whether they paid whatever the fee that was set up, just like the overnight trips right now. There's a fee set to try to keep the program sustaining itself, but we're in a very fortunate position and this makes this whole debate so much easier when we have that trust fund available for us to access for day trips, overnight trips, wherever the case may be for students. Students would not be turned away in the day trip model, just like they wouldn't be, they haven't been turned away in the overnight model, but we would, I would anticipate, we'd be, you know, we'd be asking for a fee to participate like we do with other field trips and we'd have the means to make sure that all students are brought along regardless of that payment and that would make it legal under state law for us to do that.
Other comments or questions? Julie?
Well, I just had two comments. First, I'm glad Amy Allen's here so that we can acknowledge all of her efforts and she's done an incredible amount of work along with Katrina Meehan and also soliciting, you know, input from our colleagues, so we really appreciate that. You know, from where I sit, this really isn't an easy decision and I appreciate that the day trip option was added. I think the thing most troubling for me is the third of the students who are left behind. And you think, you know, next year 160 students would be sitting in the building while their peers were at Eagle Bluff and, you know, I can't really think of any other educational initiative we would go forward with as a board where we would be comfortable leaving a third of the students behind. And so I'm glad that that option was added and one that we can, you know, discuss when the motion comes forward.
And I will just echo that sentiment, Julie. I mean, Amy and a lot of other people have done a ton of work, not only preparing, you know, to deal with the increased class size next year and the options that we have, but the reason it's so difficult to look at changing this is because it's been so successful, the trips have been such a quality experience and so many people play a part in that. I'm playing the analytical role, but I'm not the person who is, who could stand before you and say that I built these programs up, so.
Noel?
Yeah, like Julie, I'm distressed that we have an educational experience that doesn't include all students, so I really forward to one that will. But having said that, I'm also distressed that free and public education has got a fee attached to it. It may be correct, but it doesn't seem ethical. So, and I understand that's been happening for a long time and maybe I've been blinded the fact that it has been going on, but I think public education shouldn't have a price tag to it or what is included in the curriculum. So that's where I would see the day trips. But I also see it proposed as concluding all students, minimal cost, includes all the teachers and presents, I think it prints incentives to be able to develop a program that uses one or several day trips to internal, to, within the community, be it River Van Carlton, San Olaf College, the ARB, as well as other close-by opportunities. Thank you.
And Noel, I was just anticipating that we would run day trips similar to other field trips because it's the most comparable. If they are low enough in price, it is possible that it could be research that we would use the trust fund to make it free trips for everybody. At $170 a person, we would use up that fund very quickly and then be looking at a different scholarship. But under a different model, we could run those numbers and see, is it possible to offer it free for everybody and say, this is what we do, you go on this day and this is the cost. So we have to research that.
Other questions? Carrie?
You know, this is one of those keep you up at night because it's not simple, it's not easy and, you know, for me, it really comes down to which of these options best demonstrates the district's commitment to experiential environmental learning. Because, you know, we know that being out hands-on is way different than doing it in the classroom. And I appreciate you taking a stand and saying, we think that day trips, you know, of all the choices, all of which are not perfect, that you think that that one is the best. Because I think it is hard to choose among them and I am inclined to support that recommendation and I have all these notes and arrows going different ways because I just kept thinking about it in different ways, but, you know, what it really came down to is that what the students get from experiential environmental education is so important, I want to make sure that every student gets it. And I know in the small groups, there was some talk about, well, why don't kids do this and should we be doing something different to make sure that all students want to do it? I personally have had children who chose to go and chose not to go and the reasons behind that are not something that's going to be changed by anything the school district is going to say. There are always going to be students who won't go on this trip and I really think it's important that all of the seventh graders do have those opportunities for this kind of experiential learning and so I will support the recommendation of going with the day trips. And I just want to mention, one of the things that came out of our small group was to consider the possibility of gendered trips for one or more of those, or perhaps for other trips that, it was a good discussion in our group about the fact that boys and girls may learn differently and may benefit from the opportunity to learn on their own. And then this is another comment about, you talked about, you know, the need to review field trips as we do all of our programs and I'm just wondering if we should develop a habit as a district of, that field trips that support our curriculum are reviewed as part of the regular curriculum cycle and do that in a very intentional way. And I know that we review field trips, you know, kind of as it happens, as we go, but if we could be real intentional about that so we know that we've got a real regularized evaluation process for how our field trips are supporting the curriculum and that, you know, that would end with a resounding endorsement of this program because it is so good, but, you know, we have these other reasons to consider changing it. And I do think that the idea of having community and continue to provide residential opportunity is a good one and, you know, maybe the day trips can be, yeah, you know, kind of teasers for some of the overnights that might be there for the kids, you know, for whom environmental learning is really their spark. That's what I meant.
Environmental learning experience. And so what I'm wondering is by offering day trips, what do you anticipate in terms of participation? I have no idea if, since I didn't realize that there was such a drop-off and I guess I should have having chaperoned the last time, but that it was that significant a numbers, do we typically have that for day trips? Do you usually have a 90% and just a few that don't go or, you know, I don't know, Valley Fair, there's the Minnesota Twins, I mean, there's, and then there's all the sixth-grade trips. Do you have a sense of what the day trip participation would be?
I think it's always well over 90% and, you know, whether it's 99% or 97% has a little bit to do with, is it going to go extended past the school day? Because we certainly do have trips that where the students come back four o'clock, five o'clock, I mean, they don't have their transportation anymore, but that's a choice that we decide to make to make it worthwhile. So how long is the trip and what is the fee that we're charging? If it's $5, it's usually a 99%, you know, it's typically, it's a very personal reason why somebody would say, today I choose not to have my child attend this particular trip, but that's rare. If the cost goes up a little bit more, then there's a few more students, but all of our trips have very high attendance rates or we'd be doing the same thing, looking at it and saying, what's, you know, is this still worth substituting a day of instruction for a field experience? Because some of them are social trips and they're meant to be fun and that's part of the experience, but most of them have an academic base to them and so we're just trying to learn things in a different setting that, you know, research tells us that when you're moving, things stick when you learn the concepts and that's, you know, our seventh-grade sciences classes try to do that in the setting that we're in. They try to get outdoors on our campus, they try to get to the ARB and these places because they know when they're moving, you know, their brains retain the scientific concepts that they're teaching them.
So, and my second question is just more, one of the things I've heard from parents about the day trip options is just, those who have been in the community, there was a history where the fifth grade had done Eagle Bluff and then that went away and the following year it was a day trip option and then the day trips went away. So there's a certain fear that, and I guess I'm also anticipating that this isn't a one year, we're not just doing it for the big class, we're considering this in the future? So I guess there's two questions. One, is this, is what we're considering just for next year or is this going forward? And if it is going forward, what do we anticipate in terms of the day trips if that is the case?
The spirit behind our recommendation is this would be an ongoing thing until it was reviewed again and another decision was made at some point in the future, which we hope it is reviewed again in the future. The sense of urgency is to deal with next year. And if we were to run the trip just like we did last year, we'd then have to make a decision of how do we limit participation if those predictions hold true. So we are looking, I don't want to say long-term, we are looking for the near future to make this decision for an extended period of time. But once again, it would come upon review, the first year if something wasn't right about it with participation or if it was safe or whatever the case may be. So that's what we're thinking right now.
So that, and then the second question was just more the life of the day trips, that it's not just, that we anticipate this, that we value environmental learning and that this was, is something that we're going to continue to look at. We might, you know, always be evaluating to do better and consider participation and consider the experience, but that isn't a, what we're saying is not that we don't value it and that we're looking at to trickle it out, but instead just looking to get broader participation with a rich experience, is that fair or?
That's exactly it. We very highly value the experience that the kids have had. You know, we can't even come up with a list of negative things about it other than the amount of space that's available and the participation. The trade-off of instructional days for a retreat to an environmental learning center is, you know, is an easy decision to make. It's the splitting up of the student body into two different things that is really what's problematic.
Other questions? Julie?
Just one quick question, you talked about the, you alluded to the team-building activities and we talked at one point about possibly having the students do the ropes course because having been a chaperone, that was what, absolutely the highlight of the trip for the students. And it, again, it's unfortunate that a third of the students in that particular class didn't get to experience something like a ropes course. So could that potentially be considered as one of the team-building type activities of the day trip?
Yes, and we've kind of done some preliminary scanning of what's out there. Amy was spending the first part of the meeting on her iPad scouting out all the places to have those just in case questions came up about that. And the idea of the ropes course by itself is not that every student has to experience the ropes course, although that is exhilarating and it is great for self-esteem to overcome that in a safe environment. But I think the emphasis, and Amy may want to weigh in in this, is really not just those individual overcoming the ropes course, but somebody is, you know, securing you and somebody's telling you to go and somebody's cheering you on and that team-building experience and problem-solving activities where you have to physically go through, you know, courses and solve problems in a physical way that you couldn't do, you couldn't possibly do without communication and teamwork and things like that. So if we were to move forward on the day trip option, we would put together a task force of the knowledgeable people and other enthusiastic people and start sorting it out. But honestly, because she had a few hours here earlier, you know, Amy was chipping away at it, but you really have to feel like this is worth your time to really go into these great details because going in any one of these directions takes dozens of hours to really truly research them. It'd make our decision-making easier if we had all that, but we don't, you know, we can't farm this out to a consulting company to come back with all this data, but we have to do it ourselves and so that's why we're, I can't answer all those details, but...
Oh, that's fine, I understand, there's a huge amount of logistics involved and I guess I am very confident in Amy Allen and Katrina Meehan and their colleagues, that they're dedicated, they're passionate, they're committed and they will plan and execute very rich experiences for the students in day trips. I have no, I'm fully confident with that.
And that's why the plural is on there too, because we don't know that we're going to have a day and do this. It might have to be staged, but it would be, you know, some type of rotation where everybody's getting the same experience, maybe not simultaneously, that might be impossible, but it's still the same experience as opposed to two totally unique and distinct experiences.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? Thank you. All right. We are ready to move on now to the next item for discussion or report, which is item number three.
...for you this evening, maybe, yep, there we go. And basically I'm just going to share with you, in the board agenda, it indicates that we'd be looking at a preview of the proposal. And I'm going to share a handful of pieces about that, but really what I'm going to share with you is what we've really done over the last month since the last meeting and just tell you what we're chewing on yet as we prepare the proposal for you on January 28. The first piece is just our recent activities. We've been actually quite busy since the last board meeting in early December. As I alluded to earlier, we held two community meetings and my statistical staff, including, which just totally consists of Director of Teaching and Learning Mary Hansen, we had 34 people attend the two different meetings that we held on a Saturday in order to try to recruit people from the community to be able to come on a weekend day if they couldn't make it during the week, and then also Monday evening, a presentation and discussion. And as you're well aware, the format for those meetings, of the 34 who came, 22 did not have an explicit role with the school system. So I think that that gives you a good balance of administrative board folks who came as well as members of the community. So as you well know, those presentations included about an hour presentation talking about the journey that we've taken in terms of researching this particular project and then some significant... then some significant time for people in small groups. We really liked that approach because everyone, no matter whether you're an introvert, an extrovert, everyone participated, and we really felt we got excellent feedback. And we've also been conducting a number of staff meetings, though staff won't tolerate me taking more than about 30 minutes. So we've been roughly about 30 minutes. I've got one more set of building presentations tomorrow after school at Longfellow, and that will complete our staff meetings. And we are taking all those comments that people have shared with us very seriously. We used to joke about the 74 questions that we've had, and we thought we could pare that list down. And the reality is that every question that we answered begets another question, and that's a good thing because that means that we're looking at this from a number of different angles. So just know that what we're busily trying to do in preparation for the final proposal at the January 28th meeting is really trying to take those questions that people have asked, the concerns that they've had, the ideas that they've had, and get as much of that into the proposal as we possibly can. Does that make sense to folks? And then, of course, after we provide the proposals on January 28th, we'll have two more public meetings, and those will be run differently than before. They will be more of a traditional, here's the presentation of what the plan is, and a question and answer time. We feel that at that point, the input has been taken from the public, and what we're doing is presenting what our proposal is, and now we want you to comment on the proposal for your benefit as a board. The next piece is, as I just mentioned, we're really reviewing that feedback. It's been robust. It's really been quality stuff. It's actually been a lot of fun, really learning those pieces. Right now, we are still finalizing the grade level recommendations and financial components. Tomorrow's a big day because it's one of our district leadership cabinet team meetings. And after a series of these meetings, I believe that we are ready to help them come up with what we think the grade levels that would have a one-to-one initiative, and what grade levels maybe have a pod-based initiative. And what I can tell you with certainty is we will not be bringing up a proposal that would provide a one-to-one or one iPad for every student in the district. I can assure you of that. There will be grade levels that we bring forward saying that we think that these students should be in a one-to-one scenario. There will be other grade levels where we think another strategy might work. Those are the pieces that the district leadership team is going to hopefully, if we can wrestle them to stay on it, we'll get that...
Let's see how many of us are awake in the morning.
We'll be ready to go. We'll be ready to go. And then another piece that we have struggled with and worked on a number of different times, and are going to be coming to some consensus, is what are the metrics that we use to gauge success of any kind of transformational technology initiative? Much like some of the discussion that we've had about the balanced calendar, tablet-based technology is so new that mature research, quantitative research doesn't exist in a way that I feel comfortable saying, look at this study. There's a recent study out of California looking at how digital textbooks impact the student scores on a California State Assessment in the middle school. Very pro-digital textbooks, saying it made nearly a 20% increase. However, the study was funded by the people who sold the textbooks. So some questions, I do believe that they try to account for bias, but that's the kind of things that we're finding. We're also really strongly looking at developing a kind of case study approach in terms of what did things look like before transformational technology? What do they look like after? In conjunction with some type of quantitative piece that I don't have a complete plan yet for you, which is, we'll have that for you on the 28th. But just, that's really kind of the last piece that I think we're really struggling with. How do we communicate to the community that this is making a difference in student learning other than our observations? Because when we put this into play, there will be what Doug Johnson from Mankato Schools refers to as pockets of wow. There will be people who will blow your socks off with what they're going to have kids do with transformational technology. But we want to make sure that it's more than pockets of wow, and how we communicate that to the community so they understand how kids are benefiting from this. So in light of the hour, if that's my update here, are there any questions that I might answer at this time? Just trying to kind of tell you where we're at in the process.
Already coming soon.
Anybody have questions?
Was that a minute?
This was, yeah. Very good, John. Thank you.
It's a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. These last presentations are...
I have to say, if Mr. Tejstra thought it was difficult following the in-depth conversation of the calendar, I would say try to wait a few more presentations and then bring out the financial board. Doesn't get much more difficult, but I will, I'll try to get us through this, and it is some fairly good optimistic news, as much as it can be, from where we're sitting right now and as we look forward to the next legislative session. Early indications on what's coming out in those conversations appears to be pretty optimistic, so it's somewhat good news to end on a bit of a brighter note tonight. The discussion items that I want to review today or this evening is the summary of the current financial data, just a quick recap of where we ended our audited financials last year, where we're at in the budget year this year, as far as overall general fund revenues and expenditures, and take a look at our enrollment projections along with the assumptions and projections that we have built into the forecast, not only for the next following year that we're going to begin planning for, but five years out as we look long term to see where we're headed on the long-range landscape. And then we'll finalize this with a summary of the 2013-14 budget parameters and timeline that we have preliminarily set out for you. So just to recap, our general fund revenues, we had our audited financials last year reflect $40 million in general fund revenues for the 11-12 year. As we discuss often, the major influencing factors that drive 75% of that revenue is our enrollment. So we try to take a great deal of time and effort in projecting those enrollments based on historical data, and I'll review what we're looking at going forward in just a moment. This year, our overall total budgeted revenues for fiscal '12-'13 are just under $41 million, and this reflects, of course, the addition to the referendum, but we also have had a couple of those reductions for that, the other post-employment benefit levy that offsets that a little bit, that'll bounce back up. But that's why that revenue isn't reflecting the full amount of the referendum that was approved by the voters. On the expenditure side of the equation, our district's audited expenditures for last year were $38.5 million, and roughly 79% of those resulted from salary and benefits. Oftentimes, you'll see districts with about 85% of their overall budget be tied up in salary and benefits. It's slightly different here. We run just under 80%, primarily because we don't have that transportation function in-house. So those expenditures are reflected as a non-salary item or a contracted services, and that's why we're usually under most school districts when it comes to comparing salary and benefit costs. This year's budgeted expenditures, we have at $40.5 million, and this reflects increasing contract costs that were settled, as well as, you may recall, our capital budgeting process, we had a planned expenditure spend down on some larger projects because we did have some reserve built up. So that increase in expenditures from 11-12 to 12-13 budgeted years, not all just salary and benefits, it is some of those larger capital projects that we incorporated into that general fund budget. So as we take a look at the pupil unit calculations, I just, you know, we've discussed this before, and I'm just bringing this back, as far as the steps we go through in calculating the enrollment projections. And I think one of the most difficult things about student enrollment in discussing it is there's so many different reference points that can jumble you up in discussing. It seems student count should be fairly simplistic, straightforward. It's the number of students that walk in the door. But in actuality, you know, as we take attendance every single day, that gets submitted to the state through our reporting system, and that averages out for the entire year. So really, as we sit here, we don't know what our ADMs for this year is going to be because we have to get all the way through the year, and oftentimes, it'll adjust many months past the fiscal year. So we're always predicting and projecting even current year ADMs before we can even project into the future years. As we do that, each grade level is applied the weightings, and this, just to recap the different weightings for the grade levels, I have that reflected on this slide. There's a lot of debate and discussion about this as to, you know, is it really, does it really cost more to educate a student in grades seven through 12 versus one through three in the primary grades? And I think this will be particularly important to watch as we see the legislative session play out, because already we know the Senate has introduced legislation to fund all day K. And obviously, as this graph reflects, kindergarten right now is funded at .6 or just about six, just over 60% of what is defined as the funding formula. So if they go to all day K, I mean, that's going to adjust, and it would impact those other grade levels. So, you know, it will be interesting to see if these weightings change during this session as they look at how they fund K-12. Again, as I mentioned, the first step in projecting our student enrollment is to calculate what we estimate this year's ADM to be. And in order to do that, we look at the relationship between our October 1 enrollment that we capture each and every year, which is a key defining enrollment date, to what that translates into as the final ADM. And we just apply that same ratio. So I applied that ratio to our October 1 enrollment. And then from there, we take that relationship and use that cohort survival methodology in rolling those students forward to get to our predicted 2013-14 ADM projections, which on the far right there on the top graph is just under 3,800 ADMs. After applying that weighting to each of the grade levels, we're up around 4,400 WADMs. And again, just to, you know, show you all the different reference points with talking about pupil counts, October 1 ADM, weighted ADM, it can get a little confusing. It's always just kind of good to make sure you're comparing apples to apples. As I take that cohort survival methodology and apply it to predict the enrollment going forward, I think if you look down here at the second to the bottom row of numbers, that's really what historical trends is predicting our next five years of enrollment to be. And it is fairly, you know, flat. We had, we're seeing possibly a slight decline in 13-14. We did see a slight increase in this year, and so, you know, it brings our enrollment up, but because historically, for the past several years, we've seen that slight decrease, we haven't seen enough of an incline or an increase to really start swinging that slope upwards. Hopefully, if we get a few more years of gains, then we'll kind of have that steady increase. But these are the numbers here that we will apply our prediction of funding formulas to when we look out into the future years for our forecast. So as we look at the assumptions that we're applying to the overall financial projection, not only, like I said, for starting to begin building the budget for next year and presenting that to you, also looking five years out to see where those projections will get us. I did maintain that overall goal of maintaining a 16% unrestricted fund balance that we've talked about in past financial and budget discussions. Our fund balance in this financial projection does include some targeted spend down of capital reserves like we have in recent years. And, you know, we have an ongoing process with our, led by our Director of Buildings and Grounds, to really look at and review our facilities, the entrance ways, the security, you know, all of those types of things. And so as we define and recognize opportunities for improvement, we wanted to earmark those funds going forward so they're securely set in the budget so that we can quickly kind of move forward with those projects. So that is built into this projection. There's also salary and benefits that are projected to increase 3%. That seems like a really nice round number that maybe it was just kind of, oh, 3%. But actually, there's 24 different categories of salaries. Many of those, we know what the cost increases will be for 13-14 because we have settled contracts. But of course, the largest of those categories is unknown due to the teacher contract expiring June of this year. And so really, we've looked at, you know, historical data to try to best predict what some of those parameters will be for the contract negotiation going in to this next year. But in addition to all those salary line items, there's also 15 different types of benefits that are across the board range in how they will increase. You know, our TRA, we have legislative increases defined to go up 5% each year on the TRA deduction. And so those increases are rolling forward on TRA at just over 11% for the next few years until it gets to 7%. So there's a variety of different increases across the board, and it all kind of cumulatively is reflected in about 3% for the 13-14 year, drops down slightly after that as we get further out, less predictable. There's, you know, it's further out, and it's more difficult to gauge what that will be. This is the point in time that we really felt we needed to start intersecting and bringing the dollars, the dollar conversation of the technology one-to-one initiative together with the budget planning so that, you know, as you go forward with this thoughtful process and listening to Matt and bring forward all of the discussions that have taken place, I've spent a great deal of time with Matt as well as Val Murdestore from our finance department to figure out how we can best incorporate this into the budget planning process or the financial projection. It's kind of like, you know, fitting it in while you're still building the plane kind of deal. There are several different levels of rolling out the one-to-one initiative, which you'll hear more about at the next board meeting and beyond. And we felt it important to, while the decisions have not been made on how that's going to roll out, we felt the most conservative approach would be the best, of course. You know, imagine that coming from me. So for the most, we took the most expansive one-to-one initiative. And again, you'll hear more about that as those details come forward. But what we've done is we've included the cost of that at $582,000 for next year, and that does include a slight increase over the cost to account for things that just are unknown still at this point. To counter that, you know, this is another item we've had a great deal of discussion with, is, you know, we believe, we know that there will be offsetting reductions in expenditures that may not be planned, but then there should also be some that are planned and almost structured or forced, if you will. But it's going to take time. We needed, we felt we needed to build in a transition time so that it's kind of like getting the bulk of the dollars upfront to fund the one-to-one initiative, however that might roll forward. But then over the next three years, we've reduced the traditional technology budget. And over those three years, that totaled $221,000 of reductions to the traditional budget. We didn't, you know, feel like going, you know, one-for-one would be adequate. There's just things that need to be funded, servers, internet providers, all of those types of things. And so we, you know, we took that approach, again, trying to be conservative. Overall, these benefit, or these expenditure increases built into the projection represent a 4.95% increase for the 13-14 year. And flipping over to the other side of the equation and looking at the revenue assumptions, we've talked about the biggest driver being enrollment, and that's pretty flat that, you know, we have reflected going on. I did put in and factored in a 1.5% increase on the funding formula. For the last two years, you'll recall, our funding formula, basic funding gen ed aid revenue increased by $50 each year, slightly under 1% of what the funding formula was. So I started at that. I thought, well, the last two years, maybe that's a good predictor of what the next few years will be. So I started at roughly 1%. Early conversations, including what Mr. Melcher from the Department of Ed's Finance Department, the Director of Finance for the Department of Education, is bringing forward to the governor and to the legislative bodies, is a much more favorable increase. However, all of the dialogue and discussions that have to go along with that, we didn't feel it would be in our best interest to assume that's going to take place. If it does, if we get funded at the level that the Finance Committee is recommending, it... it would be higher than that 1.5%. That represents roughly $75 on the funding formula. But again, because there's so much work that has to be done at the legislative session, and quite honestly, there is still budget challenges at the state level that we're all aware of. And so, it will be just a constant review and updating of those financials and looking forward as the budgets become more solid and things become more known. But this is just a way of putting a preliminary framework around this discussion so that the work can begin going forward. Other state aid categories are special ed sources. We are holding at the current amount that we have in our budget. And you'll recall the last budget discussion we had, we amended our current general fund budget to reflect new and updated federal dollars. We saw a decrease in those. And we did update our special ed dollars. And so, we did, we are rolling those forward at a constant level until we have any new information that may impact the funding of those programs. And then things that we know, you know, the levy, we have the inflationary increase that we apply going forward that was approved by the voters last year. And lastly, federal, I just mentioned that we had reduced it this year with, as we got better, more up-to-date information from FY12. And so, that is remained at that reduced amount for now. These revenue assumptions represent an aggregate increase for next year approximately 3%. So as we look at the financial projection, this is the larger inversion.
The big version?
Yes, to be a little easier on your eyes. There's seven years represented on this, this grid, and it's broken into really four sections. The top section is the revenue portion in looking at that side of the equation. Down below that, the expenditure, there's about four lines there representing the overall expenditures and how that rolls forward based on the assumptions that we just discussed. And then the third section is the reserve worksheet, that fund balance that we always talk about and try to monitor. The bottom two sections are really those, the tests that we look at to always make sure where we're at in relation to the SOD level. It wasn't long ago in the district's history that you're all aware of that, that the district did find itself in SOD. So that's just a very important thing to maintain on the radar. And then lastly, the bottom section of this tests against our reserve goal, which we still have at 16%. So it's always, this, this model calculates what the, these assumptions will bring the reserve fund balance down to, and it's saying, you know, testing that, are you meeting the 16% goal, yes or no? Again, seven years on this sheet. The very first column is our most immediate audited financial year. The second year labeled budget year at the top is what we're currently in right now. And then the five years beyond are our projections. And I think, you know, human nature, we kind of want to jump all the way to the right and look at the worst-case scenario. And I try to remind people that, you know, when you're looking at the long-range plan, you should never really focus, in my opinion, on that right-hand column. Because you can see if, if these projections held true and nothing, not one single thing changed, we would be in a difficult situation way out into the 1718 year. I think the most important thing about those last two columns on the right is just to, to have it be a reminder of how quickly things can compound if things start going in the wrong direction, if your, if your expenditures are exceeding your revenues. If, if those two right columns were in the middle, that would be pretty alarming because it can compound so quickly. But it's a working document, it's a working model, it's something that will continually be updated as we move forward and as more, as better information comes to us. And, and again, I've worked closely with Val Murdestor in the Finance Office and just kind of getting all of the data populated in here so we can very easily move forward and respond to changes and information as it comes up. But you can see from the 13, the immediate 1314 year and 1415 year, the district really is, you know, credit to the, to all of the work of Dr. Richardson and the Board and all of you in really a sound financial situation as we sit here today, which, you know, in turn allows so many new initiatives to come out of the district, which is always a good place to be. But again, I mean, that's not to minimize the, the challenges that we know exist at the state level. And there will be very, very difficult decisions that need to be made during this legislative session for the state to be able to balance its budget. And so, while we're optimistic, I would say this is cautiously optimistic. And it also does provide enough flexibility to adjust and respond to various things like the, the technology, the One-to-One Transformational Technology Initiative and, you know, different decisions that may be surfacing at the state level. So, lastly, just to get, oh, it looks like it kind of got skewed a little bit, sorry about that. To get on your radar, just some upcoming budget dates preliminarily defined. For March 11th would really, is currently defined as, as a Board meeting that the School Board would adopt resolution requiring the administration to make recommendations for addition and reduction of programs. April 8th, if needed, there would be a resolution before you related to staffing plans for the 1314 year. Following that, in the second Board meeting of April, you would be presented with the debt service levy, the internal service levy, which is again, our self-insured health and dental plans, and food service budgets. May 13th, the, the School Board would have before it individual resolution for termination of or non-renewal of probationary staff, as well as the trust fund budgets, operating capital budgets, and community service budget. And then that, the last budget that will come before you on an individual basis would be the general fund budget, the largest budget, on May 28th, with all of this wrapping up on June 10th to get the, the overall total budget document before you. And, you know, plenty of opportunity to really discuss and dialogue some of the initiatives going on or-
... for the Director of Special Education between Northfield and Faribault. And we have been working directly with Faribault on a number of other issues, especially with the Cannon River Education Center over the last several years. We have some jointly employed staff that are currently working for us. And we are at a point where we believe that it's time to take a look at the possibilities of sharing that Director position. We think that, that this is an important thing for us to look at, given the fact that Gary will be preparing to retire and will be looking at transitioning this coming year. And that at that time, where we've had Gary involved with a number of different program activities, not only title, not only special education, but Title I, ESL, emergency crisis planning, a number of other pieces, we know that moving forward, it would be better to, to restore, bring that position back to Director role, that's the traditional special education role. So what we're proposing is really looking at sharing the Director would reduce administrative costs for both districts, and we'll take a look at the cost savings in just a minute. We know that already anytime we have a Director in each district, that there's a huge amount of duplication because both Directors are involved with getting training, doing documentation, doing all the other kinds of things that Directors need to do in terms of their connectedness to the MDE and other folks. And in terms of the kind of memorandums and materials that would come out of the Director's office. Our thinking is that in doing this, basically, one Director can do both of those for both districts. We save the extra Director's position, but we still have all that work taken care of. We also would, would look at the idea that we would continue to use this to help ensure looking at even more shared services. And initially, we're looking at sharing potentially some Pohai services going forward, Help Make Gary Pohai.
Physical and other health impairments.
Physical and other health impairments, which the people who do that, hen's teeth are more easily found. And, and so, right now, we have been hiring just a small portion of a Pohai position through Goodhue County. That person is, I think, retiring. And therefore, if we don't look at really moving towards doing a shared position, we're going to have a hard time finding that role. So we have the ability, we believe, to do some really good sharing pieces. And we believe that by having a shared Director, we can also really enhance the staff training across both staffs because that could provide those opportunities to train simultaneously. We have, again, had conversations with Faribault. Faribault actually brought it up at their work session meeting last week, got good response from their Board members in terms of wanting to proceed. We're doing really the same thing tonight. We would actually ask and would be to come back on January the 28th for final approval. That would be after Faribault's had a chance to do a final approval to also do a shared time piece. The other piece that we believe will help us to make this work really well is that as Gary is transitioning out, he has indicated a willingness to continue to provide his services half-time during the 201314 year. So during that year, he would help to work for Cheryl Hall, who is the current Director of Special Station in Faribault, to really help cement that relationship, to work on the pieces that they are going to be able to work on jointly and really to support that transition. At the same time, he'll be able also to support the transition of some of the other things that we currently have had Gary do to different individuals within our district. And again, we'll be looking at Mary to take on the roles with the federal title programs. And we think that makes a great deal of sense, and she's got excellent background in working with that in her previous position, also working with ESL. And it really is the idea that then, it really cements now and puts all kind of, of all the teaching and learning components kind of together in one shot. Also because Mary's had a lot of good experience with running a building, that she would have the supervision of the Horn fellow building as part of her role. And then we'd be looking at moving the emergency and crisis planning over to Paul Bell. And Paul is our Director of Building and Grounds, basically is already working and will be coming back to you in the near future with talking about some additional security pieces. But this would be a very appropriate place. And it really was a role that Don had when he was the Director of Building and Grounds a number of years ago. The other thing is that, and you saw in the table file today, that Pat Parlin has put in her retirement resignation for the end of the year. So the other thing that we would really lean on and ask Gary to help shepherd through would be the hiring of a replacement ALC Director for the coming year, and also to provide some initial support for that new person coming in. Because really, this was a piece that Gary and I kind of worked with almost from the beginning when I first came here, and Gary was fairly new in the district, of really making significant modifications in the ALC. And we want to make sure that that program now continues and, and does the kinds of things that need to be done. And then Gary would also provide additional support to Mary in terms of RTI implementation as we move forward toward the end of next year. Then at the end of next year, basically, Gary would fully retire. And at that point, all of those other pieces would make a full transition over. And we'd be looking then at a shared Director between the two districts. And again, we very strongly recommend this piece, but this is not something you're going to need to act on tonight. We've also given you a breakdown of the savings over the course of two years. In the first year, the savings is fairly minimal because Gary will still be on half-time. But then in the second year, the savings, again, as you can see, is almost $100,000 a year. And we'll be able to use those resources to address specific special education needs that we have, especially in terms of enhanced bookkeeping and, and finance components because with EDRS and SERGE, we've seen a huge increase in terms of the, the requirements on that end. And that would be something that we would work closely then with the Finance Department to provide that coordination. We'd also look at potentially some services that could help support individual buildings with, with their needs. And again, all those dollars being able to do that on a cost-neutral basis where we'd not be looking at any additional costs, the district, to, to actually increase the amount of direct services that we could provide to buildings and to provide for those pieces. So we see this as a win-win. We see it as a real opportunity for us to get a high-quality Director of Special Education in a known quantity in Cheryl Hall, and to move forward in a, an even stronger relationship with Faribault, which we think makes really good sense at this time. Because when you think about it, when we put the two districts together, we now have a district that's the size of a mid-size metro district. And so, the ability to really share, the ability to maximize the use of those special education resources really comes on in its own when we have that opportunity to do that. So, any questions? And I know I've talked, again, most of you through this on an individual basis, as I've talked with you last month, but any questions that you have?
Carrie? I just want to make sure, I just want to recap to make sure I really understand what we're proposing here. So for 1314, we'd have a shared special ed Director with Faribault. We'd have a half-time transition support in Gary.
Support in Gary.
And we'd continue the special ed coordinator. And then in 1415, we would continue to have the shared special ed Director. We would no longer have that half-time transition support, and we no longer have the special ed coordinator, but we would shift to-
We would replace that with a, with a full-time assistant special ed Director.
And that's to have the structures of the two districts-
And that's to make the two, exactly, to make the two structures parallel because that's exactly the same structure that Faribault has. And therefore, as Cheryl is working with those two positions, she could have the same set of expectations from her assistant, her assistant Director in Faribault as she has from her assistant Director in Northfield.
And the, the shared special ed Director would be a Cabinet member?
Would be a Cabinet member position.
The assistant would not be?
Assistant would not be, correct.
Okay. Other questions?
I just have a comment that it's too bad that our community is no longer here to see some of these items because I was thinking about five and six and the kind of creative solving and systems thinking and being able to increase that sort of services at a cost-neutral is, and to still have Gary help with the next level of RTI that we're anticipating moving from the elementary schools, I think. It's a very creative solution.
Well, we, we think it's a win-win. And I think in the end, helping to support Faribault, because, you know, they're, they're in a difficult situation right now. They've just, they've just lost another operating levy system with 550 employees, full and part-time, and the, the amount of financial and HR kinds of services we provide, we have a very lean operation. What we are looking at doing is something that is, we're seeing in a number of districts that are larger than we are, but we think really could work well with us here. And that is actually to create a new position of Director of Administrative Services or Administrative Operations. That person would really take the place of the current Director of Business Affairs position and the current Director of Human Resources and Technology position. And help put together the vision of what the office needs to operate like in terms of those back-office programming. And would give us the ability then to use some of those resource savings to put resources at the next level down and even the next level below. at the next level down, and even the next level below that, that would help us to be more able to meet the needs of all of our customers, both internal customers and also external customers in terms of parents and community members who are currently spending for the, the current positions. But we actually add additional resource and support for folks. In terms of doing this, I really think about the fact that this is kind of a Jim Collins moment. This is one of those times when we potentially have all the right people on the bus. And Jim Collins is a leadership guru, but he talks about the fact that one of the first things that you have to do if you really are going to make significant change in your organization is you have to have the right people at the right seats on the bus. And Val and Molly are all high-quality folks. Val has a CPA license, she's worked as an auditor. As, as you know, the audit, audit this last year, let's see, what would it be? It was butter. It just, it just went very, very smoothly. At the next level with appropriate responsibility and salary, and we are able to provide additional people at lower levels that can provide direct services to our staff and to our community. Again, it's a win-win, win-win. The difference is, however, Stephanie is gone as of the 20-
Third.
Third of January. And so we are, we have no more time. And if this is not something that you're comfortable with doing and approving later in this agenda, we really need to know, because at that point then, we need to turn around and advertise for a, basically coming back and doing the same business manager, Director of Business Services position.
Pay-grade level for this Director of Administrative Services? And you see that as being on par with-
This is something that, I've had a couple discussions, we've had a couple discussions already. I guess I would like to come back to you with kind of a final-
Okay.
-piece on that, because right now, we're talking about some possibilities internally to make that happen. We're also trying to take a look at some existing positions and thinking about, do they potentially need to be revised? In other words, we have some positions within the system that are not on the back-office side of technology. I mean, there, there would not be like a network specialist or whatever, but we do have people that currently have media technology as a, as a part of their work. And what we need to do is just some serious thinking about what the right combination is there.
Well, actually, it's the second item for individual action now, but-
Yeah.
The first one you see in front of you is the seventh-grade Eulco bluff trip. And we've had an extended discussion already as part of the report. And the superintendent's recommendation that's in front of you is to motion to approve transitioning the seventh-grade environmental learning center experience to a day trip or trips that enable all students and their current teachers and support staff to experience off-campus team-building and environmental and/or environmental education activities together. That's option number three. And that the Community Services Division offer an optional residential experience at an environmental learning center to be scheduled during a break on the school calendar, which now sounds like it would be immediately following-
In the fall.
Or in the, in the fall, or the, I thought it was summer.
Well, in, well, in the late summer before the start of the seventh grade year. I, I think that's, the message we have clearly, I think, from the discussion earlier, was trying to get this so that-
Rising seventh graders.
Rising seventh graders would come into seventh grade, having had that opportunity, if they wanted to do the overnight experience.
It blew forward with superintendent's recommendation that's in front of you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Now, any further discussion? Comments? Ron?
I guess I think that this is a very intrinsically valuable experience, and that intrinsic value doesn't change depending on where it happens, whether it's in the school year or not. So I'm not worried about putting it into the summer, I think. I think that though we're taking it away from the year, there, we just need to have some periodic reports on how the environmental studies piece is kind of being replaced in the curriculum, and that we don't lose that from the curriculum.
My thoughts, and I think what everybody was saying, is just having something that all of our students can, can participate in. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table. If there's not any further discussion, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are ready for the second item for individual, the next item for individual action. The restructuring of district office leadership and duties. Dr. Richardson had just explained the situation with Stephanie leaving, and the resourcefulness and creativity once again in, in presenting a solution to the board. So the superintendent's recommendation is to, I would ask for a motion to approve the elimination of the positions of Director of Human Resources and Technology and the Director of Business Services, and create the position of Director of Administrative Services. Moved by John? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rob, there you go. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last item for individual action is the school site improvement plans, which, I don't know, Dr. Richardson, if you want to say much, we've been, we've been hearing you over-
We surely do not have to say much, in that it's just, this is your opportunity at this point now, after listening to several months of presentations and asking questions and whatever is to formally approve the school and site improvement plans for 2012, '13.
I would just say that, you know, to recognize, it's so helpful to have those reports presented to the board and the work that goes into providing the details for us. And it's, just recognize all the staff and community members also, the parents that contribute. So the superintendent's recommendation is to approve the seven site improvement plans submitted by building and program staff for the 2012, 2013 school year.
Moved by John?
Seconded.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving those site improvement plans, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, items for the consent grouping. Is there, there, and there was some personnel items that were added from the table file that we're folding into here. Is there anything anybody wishes to pull from the consent grouping? No? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Noel.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ann. And you recognize that there are a nice PTO donation at Sibley and grant application. So all those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information.
And the major item we have is that we do have information on the Educational Assistant Recognition Week, which is coming up the 13th through the 19th. And again, an opportunity for us to recognize the high-quality work of our administrative assistants in all of our buildings. And we do, I think somewhere, I thought, have a lovely piece from the governor's office, but I'm not seeing it right away in here. But again, just so that you're aware of this, and we have talked to each of the buildings, and so the buildings will be doing an appropriate activity to recognize their folks. So again, we really appreciate the work that those folks do every day for our kids, and want to make sure that they are appropriately recognized for doing so. Sandberg from Northfield High School and Tony Sidell from Greenville Park Elementary School, and I think you'll notice here, it's actually flipped open to that page, so you can see that. But just, just fantastic work in terms of really continually using the technology effectively and appropriately to support the needs of our kids, and really being people, I think, others go to for help and advice, and also look to as models for, this is how we can do it even better. So just a really nice recognition for them, and they were also recognized at the TIES Conference, so.
Which, and February 11th. And before I ask for a motion, I just wanted to recognize Stephanie one more time, what a pleasure it has been to serve my-
So do I have a motion for adjournment?
I will.
Moved by Noel, is there a second? Seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion and the adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And Ashley earned her pay today, didn't she?